I know we're going to have a board secretary make the roll calls and personnel changes.
And if I please keep it down on board.
Our first will announce this application as a continuation.
S P 2310, the Park at Lakewood LLC, this is a continuation from the Public Carrying Health on April 2nd. In attendance, I will take the roll call for the members who were here at the last meeting, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Flannery.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Thank you.
And at the outset of the hearing, I will look for the record that I had reached out to Mr. Schneider, his attorney at law office, and Mr. Flannery about something that the chairman had indicated to me, whether the court would be interested in a situation where any approval, which it were approved, would be tied into a condition fund roadway improvements. In response to that, Mr. Schneider sent me an email, which I forwarded to the board through the board secretary for everyone's consideration. That is part of the board's record. I also provided it to the, Mr. Flannery and Mr. Donato. That was this afternoon. In there, Mr. Schneider makes a suggestion or said that the board might want to take a look at the applicant's website. I recommended and I took the link out of the email and I forwarded it to the board members in general. I recommend that the board not look at any websites of the applicant in connection with this application. I'm not sure if that's a good idea or a bad idea in general. I know that the websites and information, news articles, et cetera, are out there. Unlike the jury trial, board members are not sequestered. I think part of the process requires the board to have a deal for what's going on in the community. Now, information comes from all kinds of sources, but the underlying principle that I can govern is that decisions are made on the facts and the evidence that are on record presented at the hearing. And in the event that a board member, unlike ordinary matters, judicial matters, boards are entitled to use their own personal information. Unlike a jury trial, you can go to the intersection and look at it. You can go to the property and look at it. You can use your own personal knowledge of, it's not unusual, for example, for a board member to say, "Well, I know arbor by these will grow to 25 feet high." I'm making that up. I don't know how high they actually grow. But that type of information, I think, board members will get some latitude. But rather than have a debate and a discussion on whether anyone should look at this website or not look at it, I just recommend that we not make that an issue. I note, Mr. Stern, I did have a discussion with him. I had forwarded this email just, you know, blankly when I first got it. And I did not tell him my admonition that it's not a bad idea, that, you know, shouldn't be looked at. Mr. Stern indicated to me, he did actually look at the website.
I saw the three pictures.
Looked at the pictures. It has no bearing. Does that have any, will that have any influence on your judgment?
Yes.
So I just want to note that for the record, for whatever it may or may not be worth, and I will move on.
Yes. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Stern, my name is Michelle Donato. I'm the attorney for the fairways at Lakewood Homeowners Association. I'm somewhat concerned this evening that there are people, I believe, still outside the room. They do not believe that there is sufficient space in this room to accommodate them. They do have the right to be in this room. I want to just make sure that everyone can get in and not have the future project the right to attend the meeting.
Thank you. There is plenty of standing room. I note that there is some officer from the Lakewood Police Department out there. He has been managing the crowd. He has indicated that there is sufficient room. He doesn't see his safety issues. So if we just want to prop those doors open, anybody want to come in? I don't see anyone in the hall from here.
I just want to make sure because when I tried to get in, I was not being.
All right. The door is propped open. I'll just note for the record, I'm looking out into the vestibule from the dais. I don't see anyone out there.
Perhaps Mr. Donato would like to go out there and look and invite anyone in, should there be.
I, I.
I don't think that's my peruse.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on. I appreciate you, Mr. Stern.
I would like to.
Call the lawyer to your Donald Houghton C. Scott, ready for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. I would like to address another item. I think that it is very inappropriate with the chairman of the board, I believe, from your, the email that you sent, that you proposed a potential condition of an approval. This application has not been completed. There should be nothing prejudged. I do know that Mr. Jackson has eliminated some board members from participating because he perceived that he thought they had prejudged aspects of this application. And I don't think it should be prejudged at all in any respect, since you have not heard the evidence from our witnesses and this application is very, very new. Thank you.
You know, it's interesting that.
I have the record that the doors are open, the microphones are turned up. So they're turned up. So if there is anyone in the hallway, it doesn't look like there is. If you're welcome to come in and stand.
It's interesting after, back in February.
And there are empty seats as well up in the front and in the middle of the room. So anyone would like to have a seat, just come up to the board, the room, and find a seat. Correct. Mr. Schneider, please proceed.
I just wanted to note, it's interesting that after Ms. Donato convinced the court back in February that we shouldn't proceed with the hearing as originally noticed in February because she was in Florida for the month of January, and it was essential that she be here and not someone like Ms. Flannery. Last month, Ms. Donato didn't bother to show up for the prior hearing. If she had, if she had, she would have known that it was on the record that the chair asked, would there be any consideration? It's normal for there to be that in the board between the members of the board and the applicant. And the chair asked whether the applicant would be willing to give any consideration to staging the development with regard to the road improvements. So it's nothing that arose outside the record. So when we were here last time.
If I just may respond to that, I'd just like to respond.
You don't want to have anything back and forth. Ms. Donato, you're not recognized at this time. Mr. Schneider, please proceed with your case. We're going to move on.
I don't believe it's a public portion.
No, it is not, but these are.
So let's get on with the application.
We were in the middle of the testimony of Mr.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Flannery, so I'll let Mr. Flannery continue with his presentation.
Before you go, Ms. Donato, I think the sequence would be that where we left the meeting up last time, because Mr. Flannery was in the middle of his presentation. So when he's done, if you'd like to have the first crack at it, talking about the substance of what he's saying and some of the procedural stuff that you just mentioned, you will have it for him. Is that some reasonable?
Mr. Stern, I just want to tell you that I did, it's very fortunate that you had the videos of the meeting. So I didn't really miss anything. I saw everything that happened thanks to the ability to just look at the U2 video, which was very, very complete and very clear. So I did know what happened at the last meeting. And I had very important personal reasons why I was not here, but I have since arranged to have a company that when I leave. So I don't have the same concerns that I did previous. So I think I have some legitimate concerns as to why I was not here. I represent.
That's why I did not want Mr. Schneider to get into whether you were here, whether you weren't here. We don't need to cover the record with this. It's taking time. Let's move on.
All I was saying is you will have ample time to address all issues without an objection.
Yes. And actually, Mr. Flannery is going to be conducting the cross-examination and protecting the witnesses, but I'm here.
You represent all these people. You get to speak.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stern.
Mr. Flannery, please.
So at the last meeting, I introduced the general development plan application we submitted. It's for 556 dwelling units on 166.44 acres. It's at a density of 3.3 for dwelling units per acre, where the ordinance allows 3.6. So we're below what the ordinance requires. Again, I apologize for the testimony being very lengthy. Normally, the board knows I don't like to waste their time or anybody else's time. And we hit on the facts, but in this particular application, there's going to be objectors that are going to provide a lot of information, and it's going to be litigated. So I have to make sure I dot all the i's and cross all the t's. As I indicated last time, the G D P application, as indicated in the Lakewood U D O, is a bifurcated preliminary. It's the first part of a preliminary similar to at the zoning board. They do this for use variances all the time. And really, the, all it does is it locks in the zoning as it currently is, and it allows for development of this property in accordance with the general development plan that's submitted. So if the applicant submits a preliminary and final application afterwards that are conforming to the U D O and consistent with the plan that's submitted, the zoning can't be changed on it. It doesn't lock in the number of units. It doesn't grant any right to build anything. The M L U L and the U D O both define the general development plan and therefore large developments over an extended period of time. The U D O, Section 18-606, for general development plan, says applications of the planned developments of at least 100 acres comprised of a minimum of 75 dwelling units. So that's the size. It's got to be bigger than that, which is why this board doesn't see them on a regular basis. The M L U L sets forth similar language in N J S A 40:55 D 45-1, and it indicates what needs to be in it. The general development plan shall set forth the permitted number of dwelling units, the amount of non-residential floor area, the residential density, the non-residential floor area. And it's a roadmap of what needs to be submitted. And at the last hearing, that information was submitted by the applicant's engineer and traffic engineer. An application of this size, it wouldn't benefit anybody to rush through it and try to get a quick approval. It benefits the general public and the applicant to do it as the general development plan. The general development plan is basically a planning application. It says, "This is our plan. We have nine sheets that we've submitted." It shows the open space. It shows various elements of it so that the board gets the feeling. And then we present the testimony to indicate that we're conforming with the provisions of the Lakewood Unified Development Ordinance and we're conforming with the provisions of the municipal land use law. At the last hearing, preliminary engineering and traffic analysis was presented, and it indicates the applicant's ability and intent to prepare applications for preliminary subdivision approval, which would be 100% conforming to the U D U and U D O and the M L U L requirements. And that documents were submitted and testimony was provided at the last meeting indicating that that was the intent of this application. Again, the G D P approval only grants the right to submit those preliminary and final applications. It would be the second part of the preliminary, similar to at a zoning board, once a use variance is granted under the bifurcated application. The applicant then comes back and provides the details and then gets some approval, something that can be built. Also, as I indicated in the last meeting, we had a video that was shown. We looked at the plans. It is a well-laid-out application. It's certainly the nicest application that I presented to the board and the nicest application that I think this board has seen in many years. Exhibits, nice to go through. I don't know what number we were up to. John, you know what number we were up to?
No, we're looking for our board secretary.
Why don't we proceed, and we'll come back to Lakewood afterwards.
All right. Well, the exhibit that's on the board now is sheet four of the general development plan that's submitted, and it's labeled as the open space plan. And it's one of the plans that's being submitted. And the interesting part is when you see the colors, the yellow is the common open space that's being provided. And as you can see from it, it's a large percentage. It's 11% of the site. The, there's a very small piece in the lower left-hand corner. That's the pine snake habitat area. There's no pine snakes, but if there were any pine snakes, it would be a nice place for them. And there was a landfill there at one time. And when a landfill's there, that's a nice habitat for pine snakes. And three of these applicants have gone out looking for pine snakes. Apparently, it's a well-kept secret. They don't have social media. They didn't notice they'd come here. But the D E P requires that we preserve that pine snake habitat. So if any pine snake ever finds it, 1.1% of the site tends to set aside for those pine snakes. We also have the existing deed restricted areas and proposed deed restricted areas. And those preservation areas, the paths of recreation areas, that represents 27% of the site. You can see the coloring. Some of the coloring is a little light, but that's 27% of the site. The proposed stormwater management is 8% of the site. So roughly, that half of the site is set aside, not for development purposes, not roads, not houses. And that's why, it's my testimony, that this is the nicest application that I've submitted.
By the way, our board secretary wants to retrieve a copy of one of our books. In fact, the exhibit we're up to is A5.
A5?
Please mark that as A5 and identify it again.
A5 is a marked-up copy of sheet four, the open space plan of the general development plan that was submitted. The next one then would be A6. And A6 is sheet eight of the plan submitted, the community facilities plan. And if you look on A6, it shows all of the amenities that are provided. And these are amenities above and beyond what's required. What's required is the four community centers. In addition to the four community centers, we have pedestrian walks, pocket park, the existing clubhouse. There's 10 playground areas, three bus shelters, and four garden areas. And I've indicated, it's in yellow, a highlight of all names, but if you open your sheet to sheet eight, you can see all of these various elements, and they're distributed throughout the site, again, providing a site that, it's my testimony, it is the nicest application that I've submitted. A7 is a marked-up sheet nine, the phasing plan. And at the last meeting, Mr. Flannery asked many questions about the phasing, and I think it's important for the board to see the phasing also. So we have, the yellow is the existing clubhouse, which is already developed. The green areas to the top of A7 are the preserved open space areas that will remain. And the pink is phase one. And phase one is basically in the driving range. And as I've indicated, that's 118 dwelling units with one community center. The expected start date for that would be 2023. By the time we get all the approvals and by the time it gets geared up, so we're looking at 2023 before somebody goes out there to date. And based on a one-to-four-year completion date, the completion date would be 2024 to 2028. The next one is phase two, and it, the next, which would be A8. And just going through all the sections, because there was questions on the sections. I want the board to see how this lays out. I want everybody to be perfectly clear of what the intent of this general development plan is. And you'll know the method we're coming back, and you're going to see the timing on when this is going to be. This isn't going to be something that we're going to be at your next four meetings asking for approvals. Here, I've highlighted in blue a phase one, which was already just shown on the prior exhibit. And the pink is the next phase two. And that's an additional 100 dwelling units, which brings the combined total up to 218 with two community centers. Phase one and phase two each have their own community center. The expected start date on that would be anywhere from 2024 to 2028. So we're getting further down the road. And the completion date would be one to four years after that. A9 then would be phase three. And again, it's proceeding back into the golf course. This is being respectful of the existing community that's there, keeping the development further away from that, so that it's a long time down the road before they see anybody out there changing the landscape. That's an additional 104 dwelling units, which brings the total up to 322. The start date would be from, my eyes need to get open, 2025 to 2032. So we're really down the road. My grandkids are going to be married and having their own kids by the time. Again, there'll be another, there'll be another community center. This one also has its own community center. The next one will be A10, which is section four. Again, keeping the development away from the senior development to the south, till the very end of the development. This is another 114 dwelling units for a total of 436 with a start date of 2026 to 2036. And the start dates start spreading out, because we don't know if it's one to four years. If we look at some of the other larger projects at Lakewood, I think the later date is probably the more likely one. Something like a Westgate, which is no comparison to this because the density is through the roof. The developed area is a much larger percentage. But that was approved in '96, and I haven't finished it yet. So when I have these dates that are way down the road, it's not unrealistic. It's the job of this size. It is very realistic.
How many homes are on Westgate?
993.
Is that the final number?
Is that what was approved?
That is what was approved. It's probably gone up a little since then. I don't know if it's comparable, but it's double, it's double in size on a smaller piece of property. The next one would be A11, and that's the final phase. And you can see the pink area is the area that does abut the adult community with a start date of 2027 to 2040. So a long time down the road. International 120 dwelling units for a total of 556. This track was submitted to CAPRA, and when it was submitted to CAPRA, it was initially submitted for 936 dwelling units. There was a public hearing on that where there were over 1,000 people that came out. There was a lot of public input, and CAPRA said, "We're not approving that." CAPRA limited the impervious area on this site to 30%, which is where we come to the number we're at.
Put that back up a second. You said that area that joins the existing adult senior community, that would not be developed until 2027?
Correct.
Is that something that the applicant would agree to stipulate to, as a condition for, if the board were to grant approval, that groundbreaking or development would not occur on that portion until the time you represented?
Well, I think what we're giving is estimates. I think those kind of.
I know Mr. Flannery can pick it, but the board needs to hear.
I think the time we're giving is estimated times, and I think it would be premature to do that. The applicant does want to show his willingness to make this the nicest project. And if the board felt that was important, I would talk to the applicant, and I think they would agree to that.
Can we see that? Flannery, please hold up. What exhibit number is that?
11.
A11.
A11. And the area highlighted in pink. The area highlighted in pink, your testimony was what?
That is phase five of the development. It would be the last phase to be developed. A total of 120 dwelling units, and the estimated start date for that would be 2027 to 2040.
May I ask you a question?
Right. So we're talking about 556 duplex units.
We can have reactions, okay, but let's keep it compressed, okay?
So you're talking about a total of 556 duplex units?
Yes.
For, so 1,012 units. 556 duplexes, right?
Yes.
And we're talking about, you said that if you're not, again, it's just a general development plan. So, but what you're saying is that you don't anticipate starting for 2023 and being finished sometime in the next 20 years because it's over 1,000 units. How many units are in the fairways? 1120. Okay. I'm just trying to get an idea. When did construction start the fairways?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Justin, you can go.
No, no, forget. I'm just trying to get an idea of the timeframe so I can, so I can put things in perspective a little bit.
Hold on. Sir, please. This question is for Mr. Flannery, not for the audience.
I'm just trying to put things in perspective a little bit. I know that Westgate is about 1,000 units, and it started about 20 years ago. They're not done. I'm just trying to put things in perspective. So, how many units? You said about 1,100 units in the fairways?
Yes.
And do you know the approximate timeframe when they started?
I don't know the timeframe on that. That's a different type of development because it's senior development. I think this would be more comparable to, timeframe-wise, to Westgate. And just to be clear, when we say 556 duplex units, 272, I think, it is buildings, one on each side. And in Lakewood, the terminology is doors, 556 doors. It would be 556, you know, separate residential dwelling.
What's the basis?
And, yes. So at the CAPR application and at the public hearings, we had a lot of residents come to present their opinion. The vocal and the majority of the crowd were the ones that were not in favor of the development. There were people, and this board should remember, there were people that spoke at the master plan, as well, this board would remember, but as well as at the CAPRA hearing, in favor of development. And those people, as examples, were treated just like that, where it was adversarial. And a lot of those people don't feel comfortable. They feel intimidated by the actions of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to object to this testimony. This has nothing to do with planning. Now, I would have to agree with Mr. Flannery on that. I think that's my comments. The board knows the building permits. That's what the ordinance and the master plan embraced. So obviously, people favor that. So whether someone has known Mr. Flannery's opinion on that, I appreciate you bringing up. I think Mr. Flannery's objection is correct. We should move on.
Well, as long as there is an acknowledgement that there were people on both sides, and the board unanimously approved the master plan, the master plan, which had a recommendation to amend the R40 zone to permit a planned unit development without any restrictions as a conditional use in the R40 zone. So the point I wanted to make, and it seems like Mr. Flannery is acknowledging it, is that everybody.
I would never acknowledge any point you made. Mr. Flannery. The order of presentation can be governed by the board. Mr. Flannery, please refrain from those type of argumentative comments that are not testimonies, they're not objection, they're completely inappropriate. And I'd ask you to please, in a professional manner, refrain from making comments like that that are designed to stir the audience up. It's inappropriate. You know it's inappropriate. Please don't do it again. Mr. Flannery, please proceed. Mr. Flannery, you're also not recognized by the chair. Please go, please just, you know, abide by the appropriate conduct.
In 2017, the master plan was unanimously adopted by the. In 2017, the master plan was unanimously adopted by the planning. I think that's significant from a planning standpoint because we're going to be asking how this impacts the adjacent area and what was the intent of the master plan and the governing bodies when they adopted these enabled ordinances. And my testimony is, it was perfectly clear that for the R40 zone and specifically this particular area, everybody knew that the options for developing that were schools prior to the master plan and the 2017 ordinance. It was schools, it was campuses, or it was 40,000 square foot lots. Anybody that's been Lakewood a long time knows nobody was going to develop a large tract with 40,000 square foot lots. So it was going to be schools or campuses. And it's my opinion, the planning board made the correct decision in making this recommendation. The township committee made the correct decision in implementing the ordinance, and that we're here in strict compliance with what everybody knew was going on, what everybody expected, and in compliance with the unified development act. The main consideration throughout that master plan hearing was traffic congestion. And I think even the people that are opposed to development, it's mainly traffic congestion. A lot of people get confused, they think it's traffic. I don't think anybody cares about traffic as long as it doesn't slow them down. If the traffic is moving, nobody would be complaining. And that is documented in the master plan. So I'm going to read some of the provisions that were in the master plan that back up and give the justification for why this recommendation was made. I fully expect that someone will follow me, but they would pick pieces out of the master plan to say why it shouldn't be approved. But it's crystal clear that the planning board made this recommendation. If you looked on page nine of the 2007 master plan, under Housing Strategies, number
2017 or 2007?
2017.
Okay, I thought you said seven.
Now, all of these are the 2017, the recently adopted master plan. Housing Strategies on page nine provide housing opportunities for all groups, family sizes, and income levels. Ensure that affordable, convenient, attractive housing opportunities with appropriate yards, play areas are available. Lakewood, especially for the growing population of young families with children. This does that. Master Plan Strategies on page eight. Number seven, encourage redevelopment of existing underutilized sites. This certainly applies to this application. This board knows, and the township knows, that there are underutilized sites in Lakewood. That there are self-storage facilities, dump sources, the land that's needed in Lakewood to provide all the other housing opportunities, all the other goals and objectives. Those type of uses are going away. And the Lakewood scoop just today, it indicated the Woodlake Country Club is being redeveloped. So this isn't something new, this isn't something that's a surprise. This is something that the Lakewood land is valuable, and Lakewood needs lands for families and schools, and this is an ideal site for that. Page 23 of the same report. It goes into the population. As of July 2016, the population grew had grown to an estimated 107,58 residents, which is about 8.5% more than 2010 population of 92,843 residents, 67% more than the 2,06352 residents, and 124% more than the 1990 population of 44,988 residents. At that time, it was a small town. Most of the people in the room weren't here. But it grew. And Lakewood is growing because Lakewood's an attractive place to be. Under Traffic and Parking, it mentions the issue that I mentioned previously. Traffic congestion and a shortage of parking have been ongoing problems in Lakewood Township. These issues, which are fully explored in the circulation element, must be addressed. This can be done in part with sound lane use planning that promotes reduced reliance on private vehicles through compact development footprints. The application that's here before you tonight is just for the residential. I think everybody in this room knows, I think everybody in the board knows, when it went to CAPRA, there was a retail component to it. And the property owner fully intends to develop a retail component, but that would not be part of this planned unit development. It has property on Cross Street for that retail component, which was indicated on the CAPRA plan. And as part of this application and this whole process that's going to go on for years and years, that will be developed also so that we do provide a compact development so that everybody doesn't have to drive to downtown, to Conver, to Jackson, to Route 9 to do their shopping. Page 29 of the report. It lists the zones for the R40 residential zone. It says a land use district. The purpose of the R40 is to permit single-family detached housing, places of worship, public and private school, public building, government or cultural nature, congregant-assisted living, nursing care, and adult communities are permitted as conditional uses. In addition, this land use element proposes that the planned communities on parcels of 100 acres or more with a maximum density of 3.6 units per acre without any age restriction requirement should be permitted as a conditional use. So it's clearly indicated where it discusses the R40 zone, what the other options were, and the recommendation that the master plan, which was unanimously approved by the planning board, recommended. That recommendation, it was included on page 37. Under the recommendations, it says amendment of the R40 residential zone to permit planned communities on parcels of 100 acres or more with a maximum density of 3.6 units per acre without any age restriction should be permitted as a conditional use, which is exactly what we're presenting in this general development. The Conservation Element on page 153, under Existing Open Space, it says approximately 25% of Lakewood land area is already dedicated for recreational and open space. So Lakewood in general has 25% that's already dedicated for this. This plan, as I've indicated before, has a large dedication for open space. The approval of this plan isn't going to change Lakewood to a town that has no open space. That's been provided for, and this plan also provides. Page 179, under Goals and Objectives to alleviate circulation issues. The circulation element has four main goals that are intended to help alleviate the key circulation issues identified. Goal one is reduce traffic congestion. And it starts with work with the state of New Jersey and other interested parties to explore opportunities to widen Route 9, ensure proper implementation of the Transportation Improvement District within the whole area of the town. And this project is subject to the Transportation Improvement District, as I testified to at the last meeting. So we'll be making a substantial improvement. I have additional plans that I'm going to show you here as far as Route 9. First of all, this what do we have?
A12.
A12. A12 indicates the intersection. So for traffic congestion, in order to have traffic flowing freely, we have, we're proposing here that there would be two lanes on the way down. Knowing that this isn't like the senior community where there's a large degree that they can make a right turn and not go to Lakewood, a lot of the traffic would be going to Lakewood. So there's two left-hand turn lanes. There's, there'll be two lanes on the opposite side of Cross Street to accommodate that. And there'll be widening of Cross Street consistent with what the county is proposing. If we go to well, that's going to occur with the first phase because we need an entrance. The traffic light we're proposing, at a minimum, it would be with phase four. And again, as we submit each phase, we're going to submit the detailed traffic documents, the detailed reports on what's needed not to have an adverse impact on the existing roadway capacity.
Then will the board have the authority to condition each phase based on those studies?
Well, the studies will have to prove that the roadways have capacity. If they don't, just like when we do a bifurcated application at the zoning board, the board says, "You can't do this now, or you're going to do something to change that." It would be the same situation here. We also have plans for, it mentioned Route 9, we have plans from the DOT.
Which, I'm sorry, you get two lanes on Cross Street?
Two lanes coming out the Cross Street.
Two lanes coming out.
Yes. One lane would be for right and left turns, the other would be a dedicated left turn lane. Most intersections, you would only need one lane for in a T-intersection like this, one lane for left and one lane for right. We want to make sure we're not having these residents go right, go down somewhere else, and turn around and come back.
Can you describe what we're looking at on Cross Street? Because it's just, it's hard for me to see exactly what we're looking at on Cross Street. Is that a turning lane middle of Cross Street?
Yes. There's a turning lane, the county is doing that now.
Where's that again? Was it 12?
What I testified to at the last meeting is the county has a design plan being done. They were 60% done in January. So they're more than that at this point. To do a three-lane geometry that they're going to build. And they're intending to start it this year. They would finish it next year, long before we start. With one lane in each direction and a center turning lane.
From where to where?
It's in two phases. The phases start, for some reason, at Augusta Boulevard. I don't know why they didn't just do one phase all the way through, but they have two phases at Augusta Boulevard. The one project is about four months behind the other project.
It's not clear.
One goes from Route 9 to Augusta Boulevard. Phase two goes from Augusta Boulevard to Jackson Township, to the end, all of Cross Street.
Let me make sure I understand what your representation is and what you're suggesting. Please tell me if I'm misstating. What we're showing on A12 is a, on the books, proposed county road improvement.
Well, the Cross Street part of it, with the two lanes in each direction and the center turn lane, is on the books to be developed shortly. The intersection improvements are something that we would do. Where at this intersection, we would have XL-DL lanes. We would acquire needed right-of-way on the opposite side of the street so that we could have two lanes at this point so that any traffic coming up Cross Street would have lanes to continue in. And if somebody's making a left, it's not going to detract from that. There'll be a traffic signal at the appropriate time, but we're indicating we're agreeable to, at least by phase four, which manage the traffic.
You're saying on the north side of Cross Street, you're proposing to acquire additional right-of-lanes?
Yes. The county's ultimate goal is an 86-foot wide right-of-way. They want to have two lanes in each direction and a center turn lane. And their goal and their plans is at the intersections to provide that five-lane geometry so that the intersections are what slow down traffic. Anybody that's sat in the traffic knows, it's the intersections that slow down traffic. If the traffic can keep flying through, but when you have to wait for somebody to turn. So they're talking about five-lane geometry at the intersection so that the intersections flow freely.
I got to tell you, folks, we're trying to concentrate and understand what this application is all about. It's very tough to concentrate. Through the chair, if I may. I would say just treat this room like a courtroom. I don't think there'd be so much chatter in a courtroom. And we're really trying to understand the application. And if you just give us the opportunity to do so, we appreciate it.
Brian, sorry. Until you get to the point where there's a traffic light, how are you is there going to be stop signs?
Yes. It would be a stop-controlled intersection.
And that's through which phase, through phase four using?
Four, we would do the traffic light. If we come in and do the detailed work, and the county's going to weigh in on this also. In order to get the traffic light, we have to meet the criteria for them to say, "Yeah, you need a traffic light." And if our traffic is going to screw up Cross Street, they're going to tell us to put in the traffic light when it's needed on Cross Street. So my experience with the board is, you really don't have to worry about improvements on county roads for a onsite improvements on county roads for an applicant because the county had recently gotten very vigorous. In past years, they weren't quite as vigorous, but the county these days has been very vigorous in requiring the traffic improvements and impact fees to make sure that an applicant is not creating problems to the existing traffic path.
That's at the county site plan approval stage. But I'm going to understand. So you're proposing or suggesting that this would be at the start of phase four or by the completion of phase four? What you're showing in A12 would be completed?
I would expect that we would need to show an approval with the approval of phase four and construct it with the construction of phase four.
By what phase? I'm sorry, phase four?
Phase four.
So at the start of phase four?
Yes. So phase four, you estimated it for, again, estimate, it started about 2026.
Yeah.
That's in seven years.
Yeah.
So you said the county is proposing two phases of road improvement. Phase one from Route 9 to Augusta Boulevard. Phase two from Augusta Boulevard west to Jackson, to the Jackson. So, and there's 60% completion of design phase as of January. Presumably, they've accomplished four since January. When do you think, have you gotten any indication from the county as to when they plan on putting the project out to bid?
The county engineer told me they plan on putting the project out to bid this year. They're optimistic that they would get to start this year. But in either case, that they're anticipating completion next year.
Let me interrupt you, Brian, with a question. If the county determined that they wanted the light at phase three, would the applicant put in the light at phase three?
Yes.
What I'm trying to do is, when a planning board gets an approval, it's already presumed, and a lot of cases talk about this, that the roadway can already handle what the board approves. We're asking for the approval, and you're making the representation that these improvements will be put in place prior to a certain phase. So I asked Mr. Schneider, what assurances, what protections can we build into a potential approval that would guarantee, that would assure that these improvements are put in prior to the beginning of phase four? These improvements being what I was showing on exhibit 12.
Well, under the MOUL, development must be consistent with the GDP that's been issued. And we're consenting to that as a condition in the GDP. So the development would have to be consistent with the GDP rule.
So you're stipulating and proposing and consenting to, as the applicant, that any phasing, I'm sorry, that part of a construction of phase four upon the completion of phase three, I guess is another way to put it, but before construction starts on phase four, the improvements shown in A12 will be completed?
Or as construction starts on phase four.
What's the distinction?
What?
What's the distinction?
We could indicate that prior to CEO's
Prior to CEO's
Phase four.
Chairman, if I could. We're talking about we're talking about when different improvements may be made by phase relative to what CEOs are issuing. We had testimony at the last hearing as to the impacts of the proposed improvements to the pre- and post-traffic. I didn't get any breakdown in terms of the analysis as to what happens if the light is put in in phase three versus phase one? What happens if the lighting is done in phase one versus phase four? I think sometime later in the hearing, if we're going to be talking about locking down when improvements are done, you may want to get further traffic testimony to really get into the spur. What are the impacts if a particular improvement is put in?
Read my statement.
Brian, you indicated earlier at the general that if the county would tell you to put in the traffic light earlier, you would.
Correct.
What would cause the county to tell you to put it in earlier?
When we submit detailed plans and detailed traffic reports, they analyze them, and they see if it's going to have an adverse impact. If it has an adverse impact, they tell us to take it.
Is it a certain number of cars?
It's a certain number It, it, it's a certain number of trips. It's the, uh, indication of the capacity of the, the roads. Uh, they, they do a comprehensive, uh, analysis of, uh, the submission. At, at this point, as I indicated, the, the general development plan is a planning document. We, we don't have any approval to build anything. We don't lock in any number of units. We can't put a shovel in the ground. And, and we're saying at each time we come back for the, uh, conclusion of the preliminary and the finals, we will have those numbers. And at that point, we can say to you, here's the traffic report, uh, the, the DOT, and, and that's the next plan I wanted to show you. The DOT has finally, and it used to be a joke when Mr. Franklin was here, we joked about the DOT doing something in Lakewood, but they, they have actual plans. Where are we at, to A-12?
Going on to A-13.
A-13. A, A-13 is a set of plans that were done by the Department of Transportation, and it's Indian Head Road, uh, to Early Avenue. Uh, it's, uh, six point six, seven miles of roadway, uh, and, and it includes intersection improvements. So, A-14, um, uh, shows the, uh, traffic signal plan, uh, for Cross Street. Uh, and, and this is a, a substantial improvement. It's adding an extra lane to each side of Cross Street, one on Chestnut, one on Cross. Right now, you have, you have two there, uh, and, and that's what creates the bottleneck. Uh, this improvement, which they have the plans, we haven't gotten a definitive date from them, but I, I think the four years worth of talk about before we start, uh, is certainly, uh, is realistic. The, the township engineer has a meeting with them next month where they're gonna give a timeframe. Uh, if the board acts favorably on this, before we come back with the preliminary, we'll know those numbers. But it's showing an extra lane, uh, in each direction at that. And, and if you look at the plans, it's very limited acquisition of additional right of way, uh, which has been the DOT's problem with a lot of the things, is they, they don't wanna require a lot of right of way. They are in that process. I know a lot of my clients, I, I know people come to the planning board and say they got this letter. So, they are acquiring that. It, it's finally serious. Uh, John Franklin would have been happy because it was like fifty years ago that they started the process. Uh, and, and now they're finally serious. I guess we have a governor who likes to spend money in Brian Road.
So, you're talking about one additional lane on Chestnut Street and one additional lane on Cross Street, the intersection route line?
Yeah.
And, and where did these plans come from, A-13 and A-14?
They're, they're plans that were developed by the Department of Transportation. You, you can see the, the title blocks on the-
Play it into the mic.
They, they're plans that were developed by the New, the New Jersey Department of Transportation. The title blocks are on the plans. Uh, the township engineer, uh, shared them with us when we requested so that we could see, uh, what, what's being proposed. If we go to the next one, A-15, uh, that, that is the, uh, striking plan. It again shows how it'll be striped, so that there's a, uh, through lane, a left turn lane, and a right turn lane.
Brian, what's the visibility on this, do you, uh, you have county, now you're talking state?
Yes. I, I don't have a, a, a date when it's gonna be done. Uh, when I spoke with, uh, Jeff Sager, the, the township engineer, uh, he said his last meeting with them, which was a few months ago, they were talking about starting this project next year. They had a, uh, a, a meeting, uh, updated to update, uh, everybody on, on what the, the status is, which was delayed, so next month we'll find that out. But thi- this certainly would be information that if the board approves the general development plan, which doesn't let us build anything, it, it only gives us the assurance that nobody's gonna pull the rug out from underneath us. It gives us the opportunity to, to go to Conrail and see if we can get another opening, go to DOT, see what their timing is. And then we can come back to you and say, "Here's what we wanna do, and we're not gonna cause any problem because here's, here's what it is." Uh, and the last plan there is-
You just said.
The last plan, A-16, shows the two, uh, match lines, like again showing Cross Street and Chestnut Street, and again indicating that very limited, uh, right of way acquisition is needed in order to accomplish, uh, these improvements. I think I had finished, yeah, with the, um, plant, comments from the master plan, including with the, the, uh, the planning board and the master plan actually recommending, uh, the, the amendment of the R-40 to allow a conditional use for planned unit development exactly as, as we have proposed. Um, now, now the UVO we need to, uh, comply with, uh, or ask for relief. As I've indicated, we're not asking for relief. Uh, we don't need any relief. Uh, I, I've been doing this long enough to know that, uh, this applicant can come back with plans that completely conform with the UVO. They conform with the MLUL, and they meet all the, uh, design criteria of all the regulatory agencies. But, uh, Section eighteen dash twenty-one of the ordinance was a section that was, uh, approved by the Township Committee, uh, and it, and it lists a bunch of conditions, uh, and items which we are gonna comply with. Uh, a minimum tract area of a hundred acres, and we have a hundred and sixty-six. Uh, the permitted principal uses are residential units, uh, of all types, provided that they comply with the area involved zoning requirements, recreational facilities, sales office, uh, maintenance buildings. It does permit commercial uses, which, which we're not proposing. Uh, and then community centers and recreation buildings, which may include, uh, buildings for religious worship and community activities. And, and all of the specifics on those, uh, we come back with the preliminary and final applications, we will provide to the board. Uh, the area requirements, uh, building coverage, it indicates it has twenty-five percent. Uh, we have thirty percent impervious coverage, so we're way under on the, uh, the building coverage. Uh, the maximum building density, uh, three point six, uh, units per gross acre, and, and we're providing a three point three four, uh, under that limit. And then it indicates minimum open space, which I described to the board last time as defined in the UVO and defined right here. Uh, it says, "Open space shall mean those portions of, of a planned unit development not covered by buildings, structures of any kind, or other surfaces capable of purpose of material." So, it's basically the pervious area, the grass, the landscape areas. Uh, we have that at least fifty percent. We have seventy percent, so, so we substantially exceed it. Uh, the, the bulk requirements, we comply with all the, the bulk requirements. Uh, we're not asking for any relief. We don't need any relief. Uh, recreation facilities, this is, this is what's required for common open space and which we're providing. Uh, "Any planned unit development shall contain, comprised of the benefit, use, and enjoyment of the residents, the following recreation facility. Uh, planned unit development shall contain a recreation area which shall contain a recreation building comprised of at least fifteen square feet of floor area, inclusive of basement area for each unit intended to be developed on the planned unit." And, and we have, uh, provided that. Uh, uh, in, in addition, we have to provide parking facilities for that, uh, and, and one space for fifty square feet, which is provided on the plan and, and which, when we come back, we'll have those, uh, all those details to show the board, uh, we comply in entirety. Uh, optional recreation facilities that are listed, uh, it's golf courses, picnic, tennis, jogging trails, uh, hot lodges, playgrounds, basketball court, shuffleboard. And, and I did indicate before, the optional ones that we provided to make this a, a nice development. Uh, ownership of the recreational facilities, except for planned golf course, uh, shall be owned by homeowners association. So, we are proposing a homeowners association. It's, that's the right and, and reliable way to maintain those facilities. Uh, and, and we're agreeing to that. Uh, that is part of the, uh, proposal. Uh, perimeter, boundary setbacks of the buildings or structures uh, within seventy-five feet of the exterior boundary line of the community. We, we comply with that. Uh, homeowners association goes through all the documents that we need, uh, which we will comply with, and, and submit those documents when we come in with a preliminary and final application. Additionally, streets and roads, and, uh, the streets have to be in accordance with the RSIS. We've indicated previously, we've agreed to exceed the RSIS, which is the way Lakewood, Lakewood likes to do that with thirty-two-foot streets, so that we don't have any, a problem with school buses or, uh, I mean, to, to provide a, a roadway. Uh, it, we could've come in and said, "Now, the staple is, we only need twenty-eight feet." We could've saved four feet, which is an extra fifteen percent of, uh, uh, impervious coverage that we could've built more units. But we wanna have the, the project that we can represent as the nicest project and, and get sold as the nicest project, and something that this applicant will be proud of, uh, when it's finally completed.
So, thirty-two is more than normal or more than required?
It's more than required by the RSIS. And, and, and you haven't been on the board in a while when somebody comes in and wants to do just what's on the RSIS? The, the residential site improvement standard stipulates that that's the most that a board can ask for. In order to get more than that, the applicant has to agree. And this applicant has agreed because it's right for Lakewood.
What, what are most developments, the width of the streets, the most developments?
The, the car weight widths in Lakewood in the, in the past five or six years are all thirty-two feet. I haven't heard any developer, because if, if the developer came to me and said, "I wanna do thirty feet," I, I would say, "You're crazy. I'm not doing your application." Uh, it, it doesn't work. Uh, so thirty-two feet is the standard. It was something that John Franklin came up with, uh, a, a few years back when his garbage trucks were having trouble getting through. And, and it's something that the, the developers in Lakewood have to agree. It, it is what is needed.
So, this is more than, but this is not more than the average development in Lakewood?
It's not more than the average development in Lakewood, but it's more than is required by the law.
No, I thought I heard you say last time, "This is more than any other development in Lakewood," but I misheard.
Well, when, when I, when I said, if I was relating to what's more than any other development in Lakewood, the amount of open space, the, the amount of, uh, preserved area. Uh, I, I don't know of any other job in Lakewood that, that has those kinds of, uh, but, but as, as far as the, the roadways, we're doing roadways that work for Lakewood, uh, and, and we're agreeing to exceed the RSIS standard. The common open, the common open space, as, as I indicated from the, uh, the UVO, was the, those community centers, they were shown on the plan. And in addition to the, the community centers that were required, we had additional, where we had eleven percent common open space. Uh, it, complying with all the conditions of the UVO, which I've just documented with, that we do, makes this a, a permitted use. Uh, it's conditionally permitted. Uh, so it's permitted if you comply with the conditions. We comply with those conditions. Uh, additionally, uh, it, it's, it, it complying with the conditions.
Brian, I think some of the audience were, Brian said at the beginning, "This is longer than he usually presents." The reason he said at the beginning he's doing this, because there is a litigation overarching this whole thing, he's laying a factual record that in more detail than he normally would. So, this is taking longer than it normally needs, but, quite with this, he, he's doing it for a reason. So, continue, Brian.
You know, folks, you have to remember, we're, we're sitting here almost, let's try to lose interest. So, let's, let's try to work together. Let's, let's just try to keep it, let's try to keep it quiet. Let's try to work together. We're sitting here just like you're sitting here, so.
So, it, it's a permitted use that's consistent with the vision of the, the planning board and, and the township committee. The other thing that we need to show is, uh, conforming to the municipal land use law and JSA twenty-five, fifty-five, D dash forty-five. Uh, and that has, uh, five separate items that we need to show compliance with.
Brian, I'm rushing you, but if you had to guess, how much longer? I'm not rushing you, but.
Uh, I, I'm three-quarters through, so. "Any departures by the proposed elements from zoning regulations otherwise applicable to the subject property conform to the zoning order and standards pursuant to subsection fifty-two stated." We're, we don't depart from the, the standards. We're completely in conformance with the standards, uh, and the regulations, uh, and, and we're providing more open space and amenities than other developments in Lakewood. And, and this is exactly what was provided more by the, the planning board and township committee. So, they also, uh, uh, their vision is, is that we're conforming. B is that the proposals for maintenance and conservation of the open space are reliable, and the amount and purpose of the common open space are adequate. Uh, we're, we're gonna have a, a homeowners association. There, there's, uh, requirements in the UVO on what we submit. We're gonna, we're gonna do one that is approved by the board, but approved by your professionals. Certainly, that's the proper way to maintain it. As far as the amount and location and purpose of the common open space are adequate, it's as specified in the UVO, which was just done, uh, a couple of years ago with a development of this nature in mind. So, it's my opinion, uh, that, uh, certainly the amount, uh, and, and purpose are adequate. It, it, it was the vision of the planning board and the township committee as well as they're adequate. Uh, provision through the physical design of the proposed development for public services, control over vehicular and pedestrian traffic amenities, light air recreation, and visual enjoyment are adequate. We comply with the UVO and the RSIS, so obviously, we comply with that. That the proposed planned development will not have an adverse impact upon the area which is supposed to be established. And if the master plan was from two thousand and seven, I, I would say things may have changed, and, and maybe it is gonna have an adverse impact. But the planning board made this decision, uh, in two thousand and seventeen, that a development of this nature is appropriate for a track of this kind, and everybody knew that this particular track met that criteria. "In the case of a proposed development which contemplates construction over a period of years, that in terms of conditions intended to protect the interests of the public and the residents, occupants, owners of the proposed element, and the total completion and development are adequate." Uh, and, and certainly, we will comply with all of the standard, uh, conditions. We will submit to the, the, uh, board for preliminary and final. The documents will be reviewed by the board and your professionals, and we will comply with that provision as well. So, based on that, my testimony is that we comply completely with the UVO, and, and we comply with the provisions of the municipal land use law. The, um, the traffic congestion problem, that, that's been the problem all along, is finally being addressed by the DOT and, and the county. We have finally movement after fifty years. Uh, and, and part of that is because of the master plan process, and applicants such as this one who have met with the county, uh, the county knows that they have impact fees coming. Uh, it, it's, it's the nature of the whole development process. And, and you also need to point out that the existing traffic congestion was not from this developer. The existing traffic congestion is, is, is not this developer's fault, and it's not this developer's obligation to fix it. This developer's obligation is to make sure that they don't adversely impact the roads. The obligation to fix them is with the county and the, and the state, and, and they realize that obligation, and they have plans that are being developed to do that. Uh, if the board acts favorably on, on the general development plan, when we come back with the preliminary and final, we will have, um, all of the details that you need to see that we are in conformance with that. Uh, part of this application also was a, a fiscal report, uh, and the fiscal report was submitted. Uh, there's no requirement when you submit the fiscal report to show a surplus. The report submitted for information, so that you have some, uh, analysis of the impact, the report that was submitted indicated that the proposed development will be in three hundred and twenty million to the tax base. The annual tax revenues from that will be five point two six million. The annual projected township spending will be three point five two million, so there would be a annual surplus of one point seven four million. Again, there, there's no requirement to show a surplus, just showing the numbers. Uh, the, the, uh, the, the tax base addition, I don't think anybody's gonna argue with how much it's gonna cost. It can go up and down a little, uh, but we presented it. It, it was done appropriately in accordance with the guidelines, and, and those are the answers that were submitted. Uh, the, for this application, your board engineer did a report, and, and most of it indicates that we're compliant. Uh, I, I normally would just say, "We'll do whatever he wants," but again, because this is, is going to be litigated, it just goes through and, and highlights some of the points. Uh, on page two, he indicates, uh, the number of units that we've, that were proposed.
Are you talking the tariff report dated January twentieth, two thousand and nineteen?
Yes. Yes. So on page two, in the description, he indicates what we've said. 556 duplex units for community centers. The existing clubhouse building. The golf course to remain is nine holes, which is a 40-acre track to the west. Part of it is the old landfill, which is leased by the property owner. It was a 99-year lease. It's 18 years into that 99-year lease, so there's a lot of years left. And there's an option to buy at the end of the lease. So as far as, you know, having continuity of that nine holes, it's certainly available with the 99-year lease with the option to buy. There was a cap for approval on the property that's slightly different. It needs to be adjusted.
Brian, I can interject. So I don't play golf, but my best friend does a lot. And he was telling me that a 27-hole golf course is really good and you put it in your hat and it jumps to the top. It's a nine-hole golf course. Are you so good? Is there a viable, what is the expected viability of the golf course economically at nine holes? If it becomes economically viable? Unviable, inviable, not viable? What happens to the golf course? I know they leased it. I'm just trying to think ahead. What happens if that golf course doesn't make any economic profit?
Well, certainly that would be many years down the road because you can see phase one is only in the driving range. And I would also point out, I don't golf very much, but there are a lot of nine-hole golf courses that are open and are viable. Any business that you've had, you would have the same indication.
Guys, we're really trying to hear what you're saying, okay? So just please.
So there's a question of, is it viable or is it profitable?
Well, let's assume for hypothetically, it becomes not viable. And maybe my best friend's a snob and nine holes beneath him, but let's assume it becomes not viable. What happens then?
Well, it's township property, so the township could find somebody else to use the property.
So the lease kind of ends and the township takes it back and they do what they want?
Well, I'm not familiar with the terms of the lease. There may be some penalty for it. But the bottom line is the township can take it back and do what they want.
Okay, sorry, I interrupt.
On page three, under zoning, it indicates that we're conforming. The planned unit development, the uses are listed on sheet two of the land use plan, again showing that no bolt bearings are being sought. Page four, the report lists the various land use categories. And also under parking indicates that all street parking are proposed for the residential units and the community buildings in compliance with the ordinance. On page five, number seven, is where it indicates the transportation improvement district impact fee of 343,580 and 20 cents. And that's based on trips, so that is money, as I indicated at the last meeting, that would be given to the township. The open space plan indicates, indeed underneath that, 114 meters of open space. On page six, the tabulation of the pervious area. If you look at the tabulation, it comes out to 68.9%, but this applicant is proposing that the pervious area will be 70%. And that would be part of this general development plan. And when we come back, we have to have pervious areas of 70%. And then it indicates some of the land use items. In three, A, B, C, D, E is really overlap of the open space, which is the pervious area that we just mentioned. Under G, the environmental inventory, it mentions the feinted cava cava. We got over that. We've done over, and that sums up the report of the board engineer. I think the relevant issues that the planning board needs to look at, and we've shown compliance with the UDO and the MLUL, as I indicated, detailed submissions would confirm that when we come back with preliminary and final. Additionally, there's other outside agency approvals that are required, and we need to get all of them. If we can't get any of the other outside agency approvals, there will be no development. Some of the things that aren't relevant, there were discussions last time about size of retaining walls and ponding. There's no details in the general development plan submission on size of retaining walls and ponding because it's not appropriate at the general development plan. There's also comments about the preservation areas. And it should be clear to the board that this is not a pristine forest. It's been there since the people have been in town. It was a gravel pit next to a landfill. The Kochs family came and redeveloped it into a nice golf course, very nice, and 27 holes. There's 27-hole golf courses that are okay, 27-hole golf courses that are nice. This is a nice golf course, renowned golf course. But that's underutilized. There are other nice golf courses. In Jackson, you got the Tita Con. There's golf courses all around that anybody that wants to go and be on one of these, that your friend can go to. And then there's golf courses like the Lakewood Country Club that are just for guys like me that just want to go out with a friend and hit a ball around. And that's what will be remaining when we get this whole development done a long time from now. And again, I want to reiterate that my testimony is that I've done this a long time. I've had a lot of experience, and this applicant will be able to come back with plans that document all of that. And just summing up, again, remember the GDP only locks in the requirements for this planned unit development if preliminary and final applications are submitted consistent with this application. It doesn't give any right to build. It doesn't lock in a number of units or anything else. This will be a long process. You saw when I presented the phasing plan. It's many years into the future. In addition to it, a project of this size taking many years. Westgate didn't have litigation, so litigation just extends the time period. The applicant has submitted amenities beyond UDO requirements. I think the 50% impervious. We're proposing 30%, that's 66% less. It's a substantial difference. The RSIS compliant streets, again, would have added 15% impervious coverage if we could have used more units. The sheet eight, which I presented, showed the walkways, the park, the 10 playgrounds, the three bus shelters, and the four garden areas. This is why I contest the by under oath that this is the nicest development I've presented to the board. Why, when I came on to Lakewood Soup and interviewed with my friend, Fairway's resident, former master plan advisory member, Bill Hambein.
Trader.
And absolutely beautiful with scale homes and walkways and ponds. The self-contained unit with a lot of open space, good for Lakewood and good for the area. That's why I said one comment.
So, if you want to say something, would I, if I could? Thank you. Say your piece.
I wasn't looking to say something. I'm just standing up.
You're standing up, okay. So, where's counsel?
Yes.
So, I think if I have a break, then I'd like to hear it from you people, as we promised, and have your experts cross-examine, whatever you want to do.
Well, I have to cross-examine and bear witness.
Well, of course. Yeah, I'm yielding support to you, as I promised, with your not up, to go as long as you want. You want as long as you wanted, you can go as long as you want.
Okay.
Is it Justin, Mr. Traffic Engineer? So after you're done, I would like to have some more details, if we could, on the sequencing of the county. Terry's question. So if you can kind of mentally prepare, if there's 10 traffic improvements over the next 15 years and here's our phasing, how do they lock in so that we avoid the G requirement that doesn't exist? Okay, so prepare yourself for that. And then after that's done, Terry, we'd like to hear from you. And I don't think we're going to have time tonight, but if we do, then the audience gets to talk. So I think, so I think the plan would be to finish by 10:00 tonight, but as my esteemed colleague said last time, we're probably going to need to do this at least one more time. But I think with a five-minute break, you can cross-examine, you can present, and we're just going to go till we get this done, okay? So five-minute break, then we can leave.
If you want to get in, Mr. Chairman, we will have another meeting as long as traffic experts come here.
We're going to go till everything has been spoken, have the knowledge of everything, okay?
...
Okay, counsel.
Mr. Donato, would you like to go first, as counsel?
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, whoops, yes. Good evening, Mr. Stern, and members of court. As you know, this is a, here, this is a large, very large project. And it's very complex, it has many components and a lot of history. And so because of the variety of reasons, I was not able to be here throughout all of these hearings. So we would like to kind of share the burden of trying to go through some of this and because of the fact that it is so complex. But I'd like to start off the cross-examination, Mr. Flannery, and then I think Mr. Liston may have some additional questions. They're all gonna be part of the same thing.
I don't think that's appropriate. One lawyer, one cross-examination, you don't get two bites of the apple.
It's not two bites of the apple.
Yes, it is. You can't have one lawyer start the cross-examination and another one take over. That, we're not going to allow that. One lawyer, Mr. Liston, the capable cross-examiner, I've seen him. You're a capable cross-examiner, I've seen you. We're not going to allow that process.
Let the chairman decide.
There really is no case law that addresses it. And I have seen it occur in many instances, especially on complex applications.
Yeah, I'll say that one second. I believe that it's unfair to the witness to have one attorney cross-examine and then the other one take notes, and then you go and you could give a double shot. I just think that's an unfair process. You never see that. Not when they're on the same team and representing the same party. Mr. Stern asked me what's the argument. If you see it otherwise, it's your, it's in the board's prerogative to rule however you want to put that. So my recommendation is one lawyer, one cross-examination. When both, when one party is represented by two different attorneys.
And I have seen in court that the, there were parties who shared cross-examination. It's not a second bite at an apple, it's just different topics and different aspects of the preparation on a complex matter. You know, I think...
I love Mr. Snyder.
Look, Mr. Stern. I think when you see it in court, it's different in terms of the same team cross-examining different witnesses. Certainly have no problem that Mr. Donato wants to examine witness A and Mr. Liston cross-examines witness B, but...
Mr. Donato, would that be acceptable? Because there's three or four witnesses on different topics. Would that be okay?
I understand, Mr. Stern, I appreciate your indulgence on this. I think it would have been more effective without double dipping or doing anything that's been proper. It would never be my intention to do that. But if you are going to accept the advice of Mr. Jackson in that respect, then I will honor that and then I will proceed with the cross-examination.
Counsel, stop you from having two different attorneys on different witnesses. That's...
I understand that, Mr. Jackson. And that's what Mr. Stern just said.
And then hand off to another and let her finish her... Give her her up.
I don't think that that's really the intention here. It is just that it is a very complex case. There are a lot of facts and a lot of history. And I wanted to thank Mr. Liston for his willingness to pitch in when it was, you know, an attended hearing last time and be willing to be here tonight to say. But I'll proceed with the cross-examination. And I would like the opportunity at a certain point to go back to Mr. Liston. Isn't he the same thing?
Why would he do that?
Mr. Stern, when I make calls like this, sometimes I try to be like the umpire. You might be, you can be wrong, but you can never be endowed.
Right.
So, you know, any advice, I think the board is advised, as the chair, as your prerogative, to follow it or to not follow it, and government is either.
You know, this is not a trial, but this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. So we'd like to be as close to that as we can. But if there is some issue that you feel, Mr. Donato, that you need input from co-counsel, I'd like to give you some leeway.
Thank you.
Not too much.
Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Flannery, you want to come here so we can get you on the mic? You testified that this application is completely inconformist with the ordinance that the municipality adopted in 2017, i.e. ordinance 2017-51, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And were you part of the master plan process and the rezoning of this golf course during the time that the planning board was reviewing the master plan?
The master plan was done by the planning board. The rezoning was done by the council committee. The rezoning had nothing to do with this property. So no, I'm not a part of that.
You never made a request to the master plan density committee to change the zoning for the Eagle Ridge Golf Course?
I made requests and I testified at the public hearing.
So you were part of the re, of the master plan process?
But that would be your definition of being part. I don't think I'm part if the board makes the decision. By that definition, this whole room is part.
I have a question. Is Mr. Flannery's testimony being picked up by the mic?
You got two people now.
Yeah, I mean, I know you don't want to be too close together, but like...
What I would recommend here, Mr. Flannery, why don't you take the seat where Mr. Liston is and we'll do it like we do in court. Or right there is fine, too. We need, we'll have a witness sit and more or less a witness stand. The attorney can cross-examine.
Wow.
You both have microphones.
Wow.
All right, so, Mr. Flannery. You have a...
Yeah. I think this works.
Thank you. You remain under oath, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you made a request for zone change on this property, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
And are you, do you know whether there was an infrastructure analysis done in connection with that zone request?
I know that the planning board held many hearings. I wasn't part of their hearings or their deliberation. So I'm not sure what their professionals and what the planning board did. You'd have to ask them.
So you made a request to increase the dense zoning on this property and to allow, and to lift the adult aspect, the age restriction. Is that correct?
I did not request to increase the density. I requested to lift the age restriction requirement.
So if you, I didn't really realize I was going to be doing the questions. So let me grab my... Now you do, now you, now let me make sure I understand something. You're a professional engineer, am I right?
Professional engineer, professional planner, professional land surveyor, and licensed architect.
Okay, and you initially indicated that you were testifying here as a professional planner on this application.
That is correct. Yes.
But this evening you spoke of many things that pertain to engineering, did you not?
No, planning covers a spectrum of areas of the development process. And I think my testimony was consistent with what planning documents are and my planning experience.
So stormwater management is ordinarily something that a planner would testify about?
On a general development plan, which is basically a planning application, yes, a planner would testify. Engineers will do the detailed grading and drainage for the preliminary and final applications when they're submitted.
Okay, so you asked for, on June 9th, 2017, you requested that the township change the zoning for the Eagle Ridge Golf Course, did you not?
I don't remember the letter. If you want to show it to me, refresh my memory.
Do you want these marked before I show them to the witness?
Yes.
Do you mark them?
Mr. Jackson, could you just say what 01 is?
Ms. Donato, please show a copy of that to Schneider and identify it for the record, please.
01 is a letter of SWH associates dated June 9th, 2017, signed by Brian Flannery, addressed to the township of Lakewood. Attention, Raymond Mayor, Mayor Code.
Yep, is that left?
So... So you did make a request to the planning board advisory committee and the council to change, to allow no, no adult restriction in that property.
Yes, I did answer that to your last question.
And in fact, the master plan was adopted with a recommendation for this change, was it not?
Yes, it was.
And did you happen to attend the public hearing at which time this planning board, obviously with different members, had voted to recommend this change in the master plan? To adopt this change in the master plan?
I attended all of the numbers we have.
And do you recall the extensive debate that took place on that evening regarding traffic and the fact that there were very significant concerns expressed by the planning board as to the adequacy of the roadway systems to accommodate a development on the golf course?
I do remember there were many conversations on traffic congestion.
And isn't it true that the planning board required a condition that the use for any housing on this property would only be allowed once the roadways were all constructed and built to reach a level of service C, like in CAT?
There was a provision in there, in that effect, yes.
And isn't it true that when they adopted ordinance 2017-51, it had a specific requirement in the ordinance that this use could not come into effect until such time as the property had reached, the adjoining roadways were at a level of service C?
There was an additional provision in that ordinance that a judge has determined was inappropriate in the balance.
And are you aware of the fact that Fairways Homeowners Association has had a pending litigation in Superior Court challenging the validity of ordinance 2017-51 on numerous grounds?
I'm gonna inject at this point.
We got two people talking, you said one.
Let me, let me try to identify the...
She should have the right to be with...
We gotta go. One and Terry. There are lots of people here on golf courses.
This don't seem fair.
Sir, don't worry, I'll take care of it. Don't worry, it'll be okay.
The process allows the attorneys to interpose an objection. So just like the counsel representing this group has on numerous occasions their title to interject, make their objections. Once they make their objection, the board will rule. So it's not an improper interruption. It's a legal required interruption. And, you know, can I please, we're, we will do our best to make sure those proceedings are in accordance with the requirements of the MLUL. And outbursts like that tend to disrupt the proceedings and they don't benefit anybody. So please refrain from doing that. It's not, this isn't something where we get 251 inputs on every issue that comes up, so...
And you have really good counsel. And they know what they're doing and they can stay on their ground. So let them do their job.
Let's just, let the... All right, Mr. Schneider, you had an objection?
The objection is, we're now getting on to who has what litigation in the Superior Court. And, you know, that's a road that will go on forever. The litigation that counsel's referring to was filed in January of 2018. It's still pending.
Mr. Schneider, I'm gonna...
And that's the objection.
I hear your objection. And my recommendation to the board is that this area is going too far afield. It's not relevant. The master plan was adopted, the court made its ruling, we're here. What the participation was of Mr. Flannery and that his knowledge of outside litigation really is not per purview of this board. The question is, what are plans? Whether they're consistent with the master plan as it exists on the books, as it has been, with the gloss that has been put on it by Judge Ford, to use the language that legal scholars use. So that's where we're at. So whether there's another lawsuit, whether Mr. Flannery's aware of it, I don't believe it's relevant to these proceedings. And I make the recommendation that Mr. Donato be instructed to move on.
And I'd like to have an opportunity to respond to the objection, which is the normal course of action when someone objects. And I thank you very much, Mr. Stern, for that opportunity. So the reason why I think it is...
So the problem is, when, you know, you have an objection like this in court, you go off the record. And what I found is many times people will use this as a platform to make their argument. They're not really speaking to the objection. They're making their argument that is what the objection stands to keep out of the case. So I suspect that that is what Ms. Donato is going to do. So, you know, the board can handle that. If you want to let her, just, you know, keep in mind whether she's actually addressing the objection or if she's trying to do an end around on what the objection is, trying to get it in the record anyway.
Mr. Jackson?
Do you want to hear from Ms. Donato?
That's your prerogative. Yes. I'll move into a question.
Yes.
Is that an issue that I, the chair, decide or do we get input from the board?
That's a difficult one to answer. Some boards will defer to the attorney. In my view, it is always the board you give. You can take the recommendation of your attorney, unless it's all sides. And as the chair, you have a prerogative to govern the proceedings as you deem appropriate. You can hold the board on a particular issue if you want. I think that's a little cumbersome and time-consuming. But under the statute, the rules of evidence, first of all, do not apply to these proceedings. And it's the chairman's right to prevent duplication, irrelevant, and things that are too far afield to try to keep the proceedings on track and focused. So how you do that is your choice.
So, Mr. Donato, what were you gonna say?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stern. What I was going to say is that Mr. Flannery testified repeatedly this evening and on prior meetings that this application conformed entirely with what the planning board did when it adopted the master plan and it approved the change of the zoning for the Eagle Ridge Golf Course. Having said that, was very, very inadequate in that the ordinance when adopted by this municipality and when this planning board recommended the zone change and recommended the ordinance, did so with a specific statement and requirement that the level of service on the adjoining roadways had to be level of service C. It's his testimony and I have the right to cross-examination to undermine and question the validity of his testimony. Mr. Flansbrough, you were here, you voted. They voted that you had to have that restriction. That was the way that it was.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, certainly.
So given that there is and was litigation on that issue, is it within the purview of this board to ignore the judge's ruling?
No, I don't think it is, Mr. Stern. I, you should know that the ruling that happened in validating that condition took place in violation of the entire controversy doctrine, the rules of court, and it's in the appellate vision. It is in the appellate vision. And I'm not asking you to question that.
Hold on a minute. This matter was in front of Judge Ford, she made her ruling. You have, you had a motion and I believe you filed an interlocutory...
No, it's not interlocutory, it's fine.
You filed reconsideration or something?
No, I didn't file reconsideration.
I know, you asked, you asked for a stay and Judge Ford denied your stay. She denied your motion. That's the law of the land right now. Now we're trying to do it and undermine her authority.
I am not asking that to be changed. I'm questioning this man's credibility.
Let me just stop you for one second, though. You're representing to this board that it was an improper ruling by the court.
I believe it was absolutely improper.
Well, that would be your opinion, isn't that disrespectful to the law of the land? We are required to comply by the ruling of Judge Ford. Where do you, where do you have the authority to tell this board to disregard the ruling of Judge Ford and that's an invalid ruling?
I didn't ask the board to do that. I was cross-examining this witness who testified that the ordinance and the master plan were adopted consistent with this application. And that is an untrue statement. Because when this planning board adopted the ordinance and recommended the adoption of the ordinance and adopted the master plan, it did so after, I think there are over 75 pages of discussion where the traffic had to be addressed. it did so after, I think there are over 75 pages of discussion where the traffic had to be addressed. I'm not asking you to undermine it, I am simply undermining his credibility, his statements, they're untrue.
How much longer do you need on this?
No. So they give him all the time.
The counsel's point is well taken, but I'd like to give you some leeway. Okay, but I don't want the leeway to go on too long because we do have an obligation to move on.
I had no intention of it going on longer than just making certain that he acknowledged to this, that his testimony, that the ordinance was adopted and allowed this as of right. It wasn't as of right, the ordinance was not to become effective until...
Okay, so why don't we do this?
That's it.
Why don't we do this? Why don't you continue? I hear the point. But I think in this particular proceeding, we want to err on the side of more questioning versus less questioning. That being said, we do need to move on, so counsel, please ask your questions, keep them breathing, move on.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Stern. So, Mr. Garfield's name is long in the office. Mr. Flannery, you, so when you testified that this application is consistent with the ordinance that this planning board adopted or recommended for adoption and the master plan that this planning board adopted, your testimony did not take into account the fact that this use was not to come into effect until the traffic was at level of service C, isn't that correct?
The planning board did adopt the ordinance, the planning board adopted the master plan. And in the master plan, they recommended the, this planned unit development. And they had a provision in that that a Superior Court judge has determined it's invalid. So if a provision is invalid, it's not there. If you win on that, then none of this, this is all moot anyway, so I don't agree.
I don't think you should speculate on what happens. That's not planning testimony, if anyone wins or loses on that, okay? Ms. Donato, please continue.
I vote. My question is very simple, Mr. Flannery. When this planning board recommended the change in the ordinance and when it adopted the master plan, it required that the level of service on the adjacent roads be level of service C. Isn't that correct?
That was in the master plan as it does.
Thank you. So to that extent, this application is not consistent with the ordinance as recommended by this board and as embodied in the master plan, isn't that correct?
That is irrelevant, that is unimportant.
No.
His testimony, Mr. Jackson.
Let me make my recommendation. The question is, is this consistent or not consistent with an ordinance that the court said was enforceable? I don't see where that helps this board make a decision one way or the other, and I think that's irrelevant. I don't think that's an appropriate recommendation from this board.
Hopefully, the board will not rely on Mr. Flannery's testimony that this is the nicest application that he's ever seen because it's consistent with what this board did, it's not.
So counsel, I believe the ordinance also had a separability clause. So if one section of the ordinance was held to be invalid, it did not automatically invalidate the rest. So therefore, if the judge Ford invalidated a piece, that doesn't throw away the rest. So I understand this on appeal, I understand this on litigation, but I'm tending toward Mr. Jackson's recommendation, so.
I really only wanted to raise the question in order to clarify that it was in this board's position that this use should come into effect with the current state of affairs, with no limitation on traffic.
I think you made that point very well.
That's all, that's all. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. And now, I really need a clarification on something because I found it quite confusing in your testimony at the previous hearing as well as this evening. And how many units, total dwelling units, will be on this site?
The application as submitted is for 556 dwelling units.
And you do recall that the planning board, when considering the request for the rezoning and adopting the master plan, specifically questioned whether basement apartments would be allowed?
This applicant is not asking for basement apartments. This application is a general development plan for 556 dwelling units.
Mr. Flannery, isn't it true that the municipal landings law and the township's ordinance required that the general development plan specify the exact number of units and the density that will be proposed?
Yes, and we did.
And are you stating that this applicant has no intention of ever having basement apartments in this community?
This application does not incorporate basement apartments. If in the future homeowners decide to put in basement apartments, as they do in any zone, that will be something in the future. So it's not part of this application. This application is for the number of units as stipulated on the application, as the density stipulated on the application.
So your client is, is or is not willing to accept a condition that there would be a restriction in the community association documents, that there would be no basements, given your position here?
On a conforming application, I don't know why anybody would accept conditions that are not imposed on other applicants.
Because the general development plan requirements mandate that you specify the total number of units at build-out. That's the purpose of the general development plan.
And that question has been asked and answered.
So you're just gonna come back, there'll come back later for the additional 556?
This application is a planned unit development for 556 dwelling units, period.
Now, I'd like to go to some questions with regard to your statement about open space in Lakewood. And now, are you familiar with the 2013 Smart Growth Plan of the township?
I have seen it, I've read it, I certainly don't have it memorized at this point.
Are you aware of the fact that the Smart Growth Plan designates the Eagle Ridge Golf Course as park, recreation, and open space?
I don't know how a township planning document can designate a private property as a park.
Well, have you ever had the opportunity to review the planning history of the ACP ordinance that was used to create the Fairways community?
I'm gonna inject. This is exactly what Ms. Donato's lawsuit in the Superior Court is all about, exactly. And we're gonna litigate it here and litigate it in the Superior Court. We're gonna litigate it here, we'll be here many, 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 many hours.
She has the right.
It is not my intention to litigate the issue. I am questioning this witness on his testimony. He said there's plenty of open space all around the township and this particular golf course is not open space. And all I wanted to do was show him...
Is that not accurate, though? It's not zoned for open spaces, is it?
May I see the exhibit?
This is...
Is it zoned for open space?
You see these exhibits about 10 times, Mr. Stern.
I'm asking you if this is zoned for open space, what's it zoned for right now?
By virtue of 2017-51, it's zoned for this application as people are born.
So if you have a lawsuit that's challenging the zoning, you may succeed in that, you may not succeed. This board is on the appropriate forum for making that determination.
I'm not asking the board to do it, Mr. Jackson.
And what's the relevance of asking him what the historic zoning on this property was?
Because his testimony is that there was plenty, there's plenty of open space in the township. And I wanted to show him that your Smart Growth Plan designates the golf course as open space, that's all. I'm not asking you to make a ruling, I'm just asking the board to understand the whole picture of that and not just get revisionist and historic history from the witness.
Hold on a moment, Mr. Schneider, you should not be conferring with the witness while she's making her arguments.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I'm sorry, please proceed.
Well, why don't we just do this? I'm just cross-examining this witness, I'm not asking the board.
Yeah, I know, but I got the sense that you were intimating through your cross-examination that the board should take into account that this previously zoned is open space.
No, I'm asking this witness in his testimony about this site to recognize what was this site was used as, that was what it was approved as.
Well, that's a different question than I think you asked.
Everyone acknowledges the site is a golf course. Everyone acknowledges it, there's no secret.
Then I imagine you have no objection to the question.
The document says, shows areas that are existing parks, recreation, and open space. It's one of those three, it's recreation. Yeah, so in 2013, a Smart Growth Plan said, there's an existing recreation area here. What are we cross-examining this witness about?
Because I want to cross-examine the witness about this fully important.
What's the question you want to ask? I thought what you just said was a little different than it was originally.
There are different, there are different components of the question. One aspect of the question is undermining, well, he said, Mr. Flannery stated that there's a lot of open space in the town and you don't need this one. And I'm going to show him that it wasn't this in the 2013 Smart Growth Plan, open space. This planning Smart Growth Plan is open space.
It's not, it's, you know, it's an inaccurate statement.
Well, it's existing parks, recreation, and open space.
Yes, those are three different categories, three different categories. And we acknowledge it's a golf course and a golf course is recreation.
I don't understand the relevance of this, Mr. Stern, I don't...
Well, it says nearly one-third of Lakewood's land area is dedicated for recreation and open space.
This is in 2013?
Yeah, and this was the document, Mr. Jackson, that was used to change the state plan for the CAFRA, which further goes to Mr. Flannery's argument that it's completely in compliance with all the...
Why interrupt me?
...a day deposing Mr. Lichtenstein about this very thing in the litigation. This is all about the litigation, so same issues.
I'm not asking this board to make any...
Counsel, let me ask you a question, if I could, please.
Yes, Mr. Stern.
So the... Is this 2013 Smart Growth Plan, and I apologize, I've never read it, I've never heard of it, is it legally binding on this board?
The 2013 Smart Growth Plan was used as the basis for the change in the state plan designation, the coverage on this property from 5% to 30%. They misinterpreted, I'm just, he's asking me a question, I have all the evidence here and it's going to come in through our panel.
Is that the current binding document on this board right now? Is your position that this board must abide by that 2013 document?
I am not asking this board to make a ruling on anything that is before the Superior Court. I am cross-examining this witness on his testimony.
Mr. Stern's question was straightforward. Is that 2013 document that you were waiving binding on this board, is it still enforced?
I believe it should be still enforced, one has planning and planning in place, yes.
Mr. Vogt, is that document binding on this board, is that the current document that has been superseded by any...
I can't tell you what plans are binding. We live in a world of ordinances. We go by the county ordinances, the presumption is the ordinances are valid. Obviously, if the ordinance is challenged and overturned, we no longer go by the ordinance. But we don't go by plans, we go by ordinances.
And in that respect, even the master plan itself, it's a foundation, it's something you're supposed to comply with, but it's not mandating. So I wasn't trying to say to the board what you had to do. I was trying to cross-examine this witness. But I believe the Smart Growth Plan to our, I just think that it is very helpful to know the whole picture. You're being asked to do something that is very difficult.
Did this witness mention the 2013 Smart Growth Plan, did this record?
He spoke all about the fact that this is consistent with all the open space plans with town and it's...
The master plan, he mentioned, the master plan and the ordinance.
And that the CAFRA, the CAFRA permit was granted based on what was allowed there and that CAFRA plan is, in order to undermine that statement, you have to go to 2013.
Counsel, let me ask you another question, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Stern.
If we could either spend the next 15 minutes arguing whether you should have the right to question Mr. Flannery, or if you're questioning of Mr. Flannery would be less than 10, 15 minutes, then maybe, unless counsel is violently objecting, it might be better for you to finish...
There's a lot of wisdom in your observation.
So if you think that the course of your questions will be less than the amount of time we'll spend arguing whether you should make the question, I would like you to proceed. But I'll be watching very carefully that you abide by that time limit.
I don't think I could abide by a 10-minute time limit with or without the interjections and objections. And I think you'd never get Mr. Schneider to stop objecting. So I'm just saying, I'm not asking anything, I'm not asking this board to rule.
I think he wants you to move on, so go ahead.
I'm gonna move on, I'm gonna move on. Now, Mr. Flannery, you had a firm called Flannery, Webber, Hansen, right?
That is correct.
FWH, am I correct?
The firm was initially Flannery, Webber, Hansen. The firm that currently exists, I am not a partner in, is FWH.
Okay, and did FWH do works for the COGS, a group of entities that developed the Fairways residential community and the Eagle Ridge Golf Course?
FWH did stakeout work for the COGS.
What is stakeout work, I'm sorry?
When there's construction proposed, the surveyors go out and they say...
Talk on the mic.
That they stake out where the buildings are gonna be built.
Okay, and that's what you did?
I am not aware of any work other than the construction-related work for, with respect to this project.
And you did say, did you not, that this is the first GDP in Lakewood Township that you've worked on, or did I misunderstand?
That is correct.
Ms. Donato, can you make sure that I get email copies of all those?
Absolutely, I'll give you one right now.
Because I know you'll open me for the file and I have to have you.
I'll give you one if you want me.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, well, there's a bunch of copies if you'd like to pass them out, so if I can see. And just put one on the big one, and then these are all extras of that same.
And 01 is what?
01, I don't have extras, but I'll make a list, okay? Okay, this is 02. Now, Mr. Flannery, regarding 02, your logo, FWH, is in the bottom left-hand corner of that document, is it not?
That's not my logo, the FWH logo is in the bottom, yes.
Yeah, the logo of FWH, that's not your current logo.
That's correct.
When did you disassociate yourself from FWH? Years ago?
Years ago.
How many years ago?
I do contract work for FWH, if they need my help, they hire me, same as other engineering firms hire me. So I do some work in that nature with them. But I haven't been an owner in FWH for more than 10 years.
Okay, so can you read the, from the title block, the date of the plan entitled Final Major Subdivision at Fairways at Lake Ridge?
Yes, the title block says Final Major Subdivision at Fairways at Lake Ridge, Exhibit 12, prepared by Lynch, Juliano, and Associates, with John Mooseneck's title block on it. And it's got a date of 4/30/01.
4/30/01, is it not?
Yes, you're right, 4/30/01.
So that was more than 10 years ago, so you were with FWH at that time?
But that's not when this plan was done. This was an exhibit that took Lynch, Juliano, and Associate plans and put together a pretty exhibit. You can see FWH doesn't have a title block, nobody signed it. It's a pretty exhibit to help out the Fairways residents so they have a free map to show everybody where they think of it.
So why does it have Exhibit B1 on it?
It was probably Exhibit A1, I don't know, I didn't look on it.
It just has, somebody put your, the logo of your firm on it?
You keep saying my logo, not my logo.
The logo of your firm was placed on it.
The logo of my prior firm.
And you had nothing to do with the preparation?
Sit down already!
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Dude, no, no.
We're not gonna tolerate it.
No, 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 not yet. Don't do that again, do not do that again, are we clear?
Yeah.
No, that was stern, that was saying...
No, that was stern, that was staying. I understand, but do not do that again.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
I think the witness should be asked if he's ever seen the exhibit before. If he hasn't, then I don't see how this, how they can be cross-examined about it.
The way this is supposed to work, if the witness can identify or authenticate the document, then it goes to evidence, if not, the attorney can wave it around and ask questions about it. But unless she can authenticate this document, put it into evidence in some manner, unless the witness acknowledges it, says what it is--
I was trying to get there, first I was involved--
Go ahead, I agree, that's-- No question, go.
And that was not an objection, it was an interruption. And I put as--
Listen, I don't--
Please be patient, please be patient, the board is being very cooperative, let's just go-- Okay, so please, thank you, Mr. Jackson.
We don't need you to weigh in on whether it's an objection or an interruption. Please proceed. Please proceed.
All right, Mr. Flannery, have you ever seen this document before?
I don't recall seeing it, maybe I have, but I had nothing to do with preparation of that document.
Okay, so you wouldn't know why the golf course has a certain color green that is the same as the common area in the Fairways community, would you?
It's a pretty picture exhibit, that's all it is. It's got no legal binding.
Well, how do you know that, if you don't know where it comes from?
Because if it had legal binding, a professional would have signed it.
Well, isn't it signed by Mr. Wesnick, or it's not signed by him, but it's part of his plan for final major subdivision?
Mr. Wesnick is with Lynch, Juliana, and Associates, which is no longer a business.
I know that, but what does that have to do with anything? Well, he was in business when it was created, wasn't he?
When this exhibit was created?
Yes, yes.
I have no idea, I don't know when this exhibit was created, do you?
So you mean Mr. Wesnick has basically just put your former firm's logo on this plan?
Mr. Wesnick didn't do it. The former firm put their, uh, they put Exhibit B1 and the FWH logo on there, for whatever reason I don't--
You were a former firm, you were a member of the firm at that time.
I don't know when it was done, so I don't know--
It's in, one, it's in--
The plan that Mr. Wesnick did was done in O1.
All right, okay, thank you. So you haven't had anything to do with it?
Correct.
And you know that the golf course--
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, you have to--
Yes.
Mr. Chair, please.
I'm sorry, did you say before that this matches the open space plan that's currently being, being told?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, it was not. This was a document that was prepared for the Fairways Adult Community Project, which was the ordinance that was in effect prior to the ordinance that is now being sought for development of the--
Were you prepared to authenticate this document?
Uh, I am prepared when my witness gets, yes, when my witness is testified--
And what's your property group? What is your property?
I'm not there right now, Mr. Jackson, I'm cross-examining this witness. We don't, it's marked for ID, I'm not introducing it into evidence at this time.
Okay, so right now you're not prepared to say whether this is an authentic copy?
I can prepare to tell you that it's an authentic copy of something hanging on the wall in the Fairways clubhouse, yes. And it obviously has a number of notations on it.
Do you know who prepared it and when it was prepared? And if this FWH logo appeared on it, when that was placed on it?
I don't know the answer to those questions.
And so far the witness doesn't either.
No, I know that, so now I know that he doesn't know, I thought maybe he would know. But he doesn't.
Let's move on.
But this is not for introducing evidence, I'm just cross-examining. All right, are you aware that this plan development for this tract also included a commercial component?
I'm gonna object, just because of the use of the propositions. You know, what's this plan development for this tract? Is she asking about the applicant's plan development, or is she still talking about--
This plan development of the application before the board at this time.
Thank you.
The application of the park at Lakewood does not have a commercial component.
Does the ordinance, the plan development ordinance, that this application is before the board for, have a commercial component?
Commercial uses are permitted. They are not shown on the general development plan, so this applicant is not asking on the tract submitted for commercial uses.
Isn't it true that the application, the commercial components were before the zoning board adjustment, and they obtained variances on April 8?
It was an application before the zoning board for a different applicant on a different piece of property.
Are you saying that the application before the zoning board adjustment that was approved on April 8 had nothing to do with this plan development in its entirety?
I think if you listen to what I said, I said that the application at the zoning board was for a different applicant on a different piece of property.
It, so it was not within the bounds of the plan development that is part of Ordinance 2017-51?
Correct.
How do you know that?
Because I did the testimony for both.
And as a general development plan, aren't all components of the, of the outer boundaries of the general development plan supposed to be presented to the board in its entirety?
Yes, and they were.
Where's the commercial?
No commercial is required.
I know it's not required, but there was commercial within the boundaries of what was rezoned by Ordinance 2017-51?
There was no rezoning of this property.
The ordinance, yes, it was rezoned, eliminated the adult community, they adopted an ordinance called 2017-51. They said the density was 3.6 units to the acre, plus they could have a basement apartment. Isn't that a rezoning? They adopted an ordinance--
Wait a second, wait a second, you made a series of statements. Ask the witness if he agrees with those statements, otherwise--
Do you agree with those statements, Mr. Stern? So what don't you agree with?
Uh, the ordinance did not say allowing basement apartments. The, uh, the adult community was not eliminated. The ordinance added an additional permitted use. The property still zoned R40, and it added an additional permitted use to the R40 zone.
And the additional permitted use is called a plan development, is it not?
Yes.
And that's why you're here, isn't that correct? And the plan development allows residential development, does it not?
Yes.
And it also allows commercial development, does it not?
Yes, it does.
Are you saying that the total tract rezoned by Ordinance 2017-51 for a general development plan, plan development, does not include any commercial areas?
Well, I'm talking about this application for the park at Lakewood. And in my testimony, my direct testimony, I indicated that the PUD ordinance allows commercial uses, but this general development plan is not seeking commercial uses.
What I am trying to clarify with you, Mr. Flannery, is that the ordinance for general development plan requires that the board-- You're, it's like a big huge master plan, isn't it, for the property?
Hold on a second, hold on a second, ask one question at a time. Are you suggesting that the, is the question to him whether the master plan requires commercial development as part of a plan development?
No, it's the general development plan ordinance itself, Mr. Jackson.
You're proposing, then ask him that, ask him if--
That's what I was trying--
He agrees with you that the GTP requires a commercial component. A GTP application requires a commercial--
All right.
Your question is--
That's, that's my question, if I can get a straight answer. Mr. Flannery, the general development plan--
Listen, it's unnecessary to make the gratuitous comment if I can get a straight answer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stern. All right, Mr. Flannery, you reviewed, you testified before this board that this is a conforming application, did you not?
Yes.
And did you review the provisions of the plan development ordinance adopted in 2017 that changed this site? You don't want to call it a rezoning, but they changed the zoning for this site, did it not?
I, in my testimony, I indicated, and I went through all the provisions, but that section of the ordinance, Section 88-1021.
Right, and isn't there another section of the ordinance called a general development plan?
Yes.
And doesn't that general development plan require that the entire tract, that is the GTP or general development plan, have a general development plan showing all components and how they would be used?
Yes, and that is what was submitted.
But you said that it does not include any commercial component.
Hold on a second, your question has a disconnect. You're missing a question. Your question to him, what I think you're inferring is that you're suggesting the GTP ordinance requires that an application have a commercial component. Is that what you're trying to say?
I'm saying that the GTP ordinance, Mr. Jackson, states that if you're coming for GTP, you look at the whole tract of land covered by the GTP, and you address everything in its entirety. The impact of traffic must include the commercial uses.
Well, you're proposing any commercial uses, and they're not required to.
But the ultimate build-out, right now you're being asked to, the board is being asked to look in a kind of a vacuum and pretend they're not going to have basements, which you know is going to happen.
That is not what the testimony--
That they're not going to have commercial--
Hold on a second, you're misrepresenting that. The applicant, Mr. Palace, was that there was the possibility for basements. And we had a discussion about that they're permitted in every zone, and I think Mr. Schneider, one of the, one of the people on the applicant, said that that's, that that may happen, and I think Mr. Flannery found made the comment, and take that into account in our approvals and in our parking requirements. And Mr. Flannery wanted to even say that. So I, I don't think it's a correct representation to say that this applicant did not say that basement apartments were a possibility. Am I misrepresenting what Mr. Schneider--
You're not.
Okay, so, so you've been saying that, I don't think that's what the testimony was, but--
Well, I will turn and say that this application doesn't, it's 596 units.
He didn't say that, he said that future homeowners want to have basement apartments set up for them, which was consistent with their earlier testimony. So I don't think it's fair for you to say that they're saying there won't be basement apartments in this application.
I don't think--
But what we're talking about now is whether-- Well, I want to make sure that the cross-examination is focused and that it's not misleading. You're suggesting through your cross-examination that there is a requirement that there be a commercial component in the GTP. The witness has denied that, and you keep making this statement, and I want to know if that's what you're getting at. Are you trying to say that there's a requirement for a commercial component in the GTP?
There is a requirement to assess the total impact of the general development plan, including all proposed uses that could generate, all density, all intensity. That's what it says in the Municipal Land Use Law, and, no, the general development--
He says that their application does not have a commercial component, right? Am I, am I missing that?
You are piecemealing the general development plan by taking that position. Okay, I disagree entirely with your perspective. The general development plan is a planning mechanism that sets the whole thing.
Counsel, I think I heard testimony of an applicant earlier this evening that there is another piece that may have retail, so there's any hiding the ball. Is your point that we as the board cannot consider this particular application by this applicant because this applicant may have another phase that involves retail and commercial? I don't, I think they discussed it.
No, I understand it, Mr. Stern, I'm not saying that you cannot consider it. I am saying that they must assess the entire impact from a traffic, from a fiscal, from all components that are part of what a GTP is.
So then, counsel, I believe you're saying then, this GTP is flawed or void or somehow we shouldn't consider it because it does not include this other tract which the applicant talked about? Is that what you're saying?
And that it doesn't also consider the build-out of the total density. That's what the statute, the Municipal Land Use Law, and the Township's ordinance requires. And so this is kind of like not in total picture. You're supposed to be looking at the big picture, and they're giving you a piece.
What if, for argument's sake, another group owned that piece of land? Would we have to say this applicant cannot move forward until that owner submits their plans?
No, they're done together, and it used to be, well, statute was a planned unit development. It's still, you hear that tech view sometimes. It encompasses a series of different uses, different owners. The purpose of the GTP is to plan for the whole tract and to understand what the traffic impact will be, what the fiscal impact will be.
So I'm asking you concretely, what are you asking this board to do?
I'm asking this board to require this applicant to assess the total impact, not just the impact of 586 homes, that, that's not the impact. The impact in the GTP, and there are specific directions in the statute as to what needs to be done. The impact of the GTP is for the total impact of the--
So you're saying that we should not consider this application until they step forward with their retail commercial?
I think they have, not that they have to have an application. Remember, this is not a site plan, Mr. Stern.
I agree, that's the point.
This is just the overall master plan for this tract of land. And so in coming before this board and in complying with the requirements of the MLUL and the GTP standards of your ordinance, you need to assess the whole thing. Otherwise, you might as well not have the GTP, you might as well just go to the site.
What section of the statute are you referring to?
Can I just interject something? This seems to be--
Hold on, hold on.
My question.
No, no, let Mr. Schneider proceed, that I'd like you to answer your question, then you can proceed.
Perhaps the witness should be asked, since he testified here today that he was also testified at a commercial development before the zoning board, whether that other property is within the zoning that it could be included in the planned unit development? Is it in the R40 zone? Is it in a zone where it could be included in this plan?
That sounds like an excellent question. Counsel, you ask your own-- Why don't we go to that one first? Because my understanding is that it was on a different tract, that's what you're not--
That's what I was confused about, trying to get clarification. I'm trying to get the same exact clarification.
The ordinance that I think Mr. Navarro referred to is, it says the general development plan shall set forth a given number of dwellings, et cetera, for the development in its entirety according to a schedule that sets forth the timing of various sections for the development. I had always interpreted that in the quarters of what they're proposing, because that's what they seek approval for. I don't think it says what they, what-- It may or may not be-- It may not be future on another tract or another parcel, even if it is for the same-- Because then that could be addressed on its own merits at a later date. And that's why I was asking Mr. Navarro, she's suggesting that there's a requirement that there be a commercial component in their, in their application. That's where I thought you, I thought that's--
It still might be nice to know whether it's even in the same zone.
But I think Mr. Schneider's question should be addressed. That's what you're getting to, right?
It's not my application, that's why I'm asking this witness. On, because of the requirement of the MLUL that it assess everything in its entirety, it's quite specifically many sections, and it's mirrored--
But you haven't defined your antecedent pronoun, what is the "it"?
That's why I'm asking him. There seems to be some, he said there's a commercial component, and I don't know--
Not in this application.
They're not proposing it, but I think, Mr. Stern, we're really failing on communication, and I really apologize, because I'm trying to be clear. If this tract of land covered by Ordinance 2017-51, okay, if that tract of land includes parcels that are not before this board on this application, then my, my statement and my argument, I think, is well-founded in Land Use Law and the ordinance. Excuse me, Mr. Stern.
What, what are you, the witness is with that question?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, so, Mr. Navarro, please add, please make your point, and then I'm really, I'm about to start moving along.
I would appreciate your being able, I was like, you know, I have a big double team here. Mr. Flannery, I want to understand something. Do you know what tract of land in its entirety was subject to the master plan change, you don't want to call it a rezoning, but subject to Ordinance 2017-51 as a planned development?
The planned development relates to the entire R40 zone, any tract that has at least 100 acres. The subject tract of the park at Lakewood, which we're here before the board this evening for, is 166 acres in the R40 zone. And in its entirety, it's been presented and analyzed. The commercial application that I did for a different applicant on a different piece of property is located in the M1 zone, which is different than the R40 zone, which is the subject of this tract, which is a different tract and a different applicant, and it was submitted and analyzed in its entirety.
And it was affected by, it was changed by Ordinance 2017-51?
Ordinance 207-51 added a provision in the R40 zone that allowed planned unit developments without age restriction. It had no impact on the lot in the M1 zone that another applicant submitted for retail development.
Thank you for that clarification. I would have gotten there very easily, but, all right, thank you very much. Okay, now. Did you prepare the fiscal impact report?
I did not.
Do you know who did?
Uh, yes.
Is there a question?
Yes, the question was, do you know who prepared the fiscal--
Fiscal impact report?
He didn't say the name, do you know who did?
You know who did it, he said yes, he answered the question.
He's answering that. He's answering that, he's looking at it.
It was prepared by Phillips, Priest, Greigile, Lenny, Hughes, LLC, Planning and Real Estate Consultants Hoboken, New Jersey.
Okay, and were you planning, you know whether or not the applicant is planning to present the author of that report to the board?
The applicant is not planning to present it. There's a requirement to submit a fiscal impact report. The fiscal impact report is pretty basic. There's no requirements of what needs to be in the fiscal impact report. It gives the board a look at projected taxes and revenues. If the board has questions on it, the applicant would certainly respond to any questions the board has.
Did you testify that the fiscal impact report showed a positive fiscal impact to the township?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so then you've read this report, and you're in a position to be able to respond?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And did the report take into account the cost of school busing for children who would live in the community?
The report took into account expenses, average expenses in Lakewood by the school district, which does take into account all of the expenses in this school district, including busing.
Have you looked at the expenses of the school district, and are you prepared to respond to questions in that board?
I have not, I didn't prepare the report. I can certainly respond to generic questions, but the conclusions are pretty specific. And again, there's no requirement that there be a surplus. If the author of the report is wrong, the surplus would be less. If he's wrong in the other direction, it would be more. This is just a document for the planning board to look at it and get an anticipated impact. And if they had questions, the engineer, the review team had no questions on it. The information is presented, and if the board has questions, the applicant would certainly get the answer.
Okay, so are you aware of the fact that in Lakewood, the cost of, the annual cost of busing a student for private school purposes is $1,000 a year?
I'm not aware of the particular numbers, and I don't think the author of the report would do that either. He's going to go on a per-unit cost, what the district spends per student for the existing students, and factor that by the number of projected students.
But isn't the purpose of the GDP with respect to fiscal impact is to allow the planning board to determine what the demand on services will be?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And so that it can be coordinated with the school budget? There's actually a specific requirement in that regard, isn't there?
Well, certainly if the planning board feels that they need more information on the fiscal report, which I haven't heard, the applicant would provide additional fiscal information. This provided a list of the projected revenue, a list of the projected costs, and a list of the projected student population, and based on that student population and the average cost for the existing student population, what the taxes would be.
What was the, was there an average number of students per family that were presented in that report?
Yes, there was.
What was that number?
1.319.
Do you know, do you know based on the demographic of the township with the applicant, where students in per family?
The number of children per family is higher than that, but the number of school-aged children is going to be less than that. Now, we're looking at a development that's going to be starting out with new families. If they have a child right away, it's going to be five years before they have any school-aged children.
Well, that's, Mr. Flannery, are you a demographic expert, Mr. Stern?
Well, you're asking the questions now.
Well, I'm asking you, are you a demographic expert?
I am not a demographic expert.
So that's your opinion, right? But you don't, you're not a demographic expert.
I am not a demographic expert.
All right, I'd like to direct your attention, please, to your testimony regarding the buffers. So I'm not sure that I heard everything that you said. So did you say that there was a buffer around the site of a certain depth?
I did not.
You didn't say there was a buffer.
I did not.
There's no buffer requirement in the ordinance?
There are buffer requirements in the ordinance. I testified per Section 18-1021, there's a perimeter setback.
And what is the perimeter, is it a perimeter setback you're calling it?
That's what the ordinance called it.
And you said it complied with the perimeter setback, is that right?
That is correct.
And what is the, what is the amount of the perimeter setback to which you referred?
Item L reads perimeter boundary setback. No buildings or structures other than entrance, gatehouse, walls, or fences shall be located within 75 feet of any exterior boundary line of the planned community tract.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Now, this, we're just going to use this. This is Phase Four of the Dynamic Engineering Conceptual Staging Plan. Was this introduced into evidence?
Yes, eight, ten.
Phase Four, eight, ten.
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to direct your attention to the area of Wolf Skyline Drive, the homes that are over Wolf Skyline Drive.
Yes.
Okay, so can you tell me, what is the depth of the buffer along the backs of these houses as they extend along the valley, right?
There is no buffer, there's a perimeter setback.
Okay, what's the...
Of 75 feet.
Are you saying that this is 75 feet?
From the house to the perimeter, yes.
So you're using rear yards as a perimeter buffer?
There is no perimeter buffer requirement.
You just read it was a perimeter buffer.
Perimeter setback, it's two different words.
All right, let's, perimeter setback. And you're using the rear yards of the houses as a perimeter setback, is that correct?
The perimeter setback was very clear, I read it, I...
I'm asking you a question. Are you using the rear yards of properties as a perimeter setback?
The perimeter setback stipulates in the ordinance, which I've read, that no structure may be located within 75 feet. We're complying with that provision by having a rear yard of at least 75 feet to the exterior boundary.
My question was very simple, but thank you for answering it. You're using the rear yards for the perimeter setback. Now, directing your attention...
Counsel, could I ask you a question? That's a great question. So we've got about 35 minutes to 10. So as a goal, an aspirational goal, not a mandate, an aspirational goal, so that we can move this entire process through reasonably. If you could have an aspirational goal of finishing a cross-examination by 10, if possible, then when we get together again, at least we're making progress along the process. Would that be reasonable?
I think it would be reasonable, I will try my very best.
I sure will, thank you.
Now, do you, do you know that there's a stormwater basin that's directly up next to the property?
I don't know what you mean by a stormwater basin up next to the property.
Mike, I don't want to mark this, but it's next to the, 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 the foundation balance enumeration here, 13149.
That doesn't call out stormwater basin.
So you don't know that's a stormwater basin?
Uh, see, then with the plan, you have to, uh, stormwater...
For purposes of the record, the chairman just stepped off the desk for a moment. Record will reflect, there's a men's room right behind this. There's a camera, you know, to... So, and that was Mr. Flanshaw, I think, is, so let's just take, we'll just take a pause. And while, while, we have another five more seconds. But one of the things I don't want this track of, well, we're technically done it, we're far, well, we're off the record for a moment. I'm going to ask for a time waiver at the appropriate time, just don't let me forget.
What's the current?
Ms. Morris said it's May 3.
And when would the next hearing date likely be?
May 7 is our next meeting.
We'll get to all that, I want to do it when we're actually on the record and we have the whole court, so, but I just don't want to detract from all the excitement, you know, sometimes.
And I really won't be here on May 7.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll address that one, we'll have one five minute rule, all right? All right, everybody's back on the desk, and we're reconvening. While we're at a break here, it's a good time, so we don't forget, to address what the new date will be and to ask for a time waiver from the applicant. So what would be your...
He's out, he's in.
Can we just do one between? Can we do one between?
If you want to take, you could take a, you could do a special meeting. That would require everybody to come, and there's a lot of coordination efforts. It has to be published in newspapers today's in advance under the sunshine law. I don't know, do you have any special meeting dates reserved?
But you can only do a special if you want, we're waiting for...
No, I think, I think that we want to give everybody time to speak, but we don't want to undo, delay the applicant, right? So let's, if we need to do a special, we lose that.
So you have to ask the board secretary what dates are available, and we have to...
I don't know the court's schedule, so I don't know that all I need to...
Well, it's assumed, like, we're tentative on, is that just working?
All right, well, then, the announcement would be invalid if the court is not available.
Right, it seems the consensus is May 21st. Is there a provision that we can start earlier and go later?
That's a question for John, on whether or not he has...
I don't, I don't have an issue, and I would ask Counsel to jump in here. I think if we announce a different time, that that would be sufficient, just like we would announce the date, so if you want to make, let me make a finish. If you want to make it four, but under the sunshine law, we would have to publish.
Sure, yeah, we...
So go ahead, Alan.
The other problem is we have a number of other applications that are in queue, and Chairman has asked me to make sure that we don't call the backlog on other applications by uncharming holding them up. We do have four applications already anticipated for May 7, and another four for May 1.
May, may, may I interject?
Yes, Counsel.
Turns out, May 21st isn't good for my line, so I'm going to work against the first date of June. Perhaps the calendar's not as full then.
That's, that's fine, I'm not looking, I don't want to delay you anymore, we can't do, but I also don't want to cut long the process. What would be the first date of June, man? Wednesday?
I think it's elections, something to do with elections.
Maybe Congress.
Okay, so, John, it looks like Wednesday, June 5?
So we'll make that announcement at the end of this meeting.
Okay.
That's great, and Mr. Schneider, if you're inclined, right away, the application, thirty days after that date.
Well, how about to that date?
Well, the problem is, what if we...
Then we're not waiting. Then we're not waiting beyond that.
I'm sorry?
If we have, if something happens, we're not waiting.
Do you want to get on the record on that?
Okay, so two weeks beyond that, it's fine.
Can you specify when that is?
Two weeks ahead of June 5.
I have the 19, it was 16, 2019.
And Mr. Stern, your best late plan, unfortunately, was scratched by the fact that I was interrupted by, by legitimate reasons, not judicial. I was aiming to, good faith ever, to finish the question.
Well, we might stay a little longer.
So just keep going.
The video recording is off at 10, I don't know if that happened.
We still have records on.
Yes, it does.
I don't have to worry about the video.
Yeah, we have an audio.
We've got 100 video cameras rolling out.
Well, people are watching it online, it's not fair. It's not fair to the people at home, they're watching it.
Okay, listen, I'll try to meet the aspirational goal for a few weeks, so we're, but just go, please.
I, I'm sorry. Did you have an opportunity to look at the plans and tell me if they had a perimeter buffer, a perimeter setback, excuse me?
Sheet six, the Stormwater Management Plan, does show a, a stormwater basin in that location.
So that it does not conform with the perimeter buffer requirement, is that correct?
I read the perimeter buffer...
Or perimeter setback.
I read the perimeter boundary setbacks, "No buildings or structures other than entrance, gatehouse, walls, or fences shall be located within 75 feet. A basin is not a structure, so..."
All right, so you're, you're testifying, basement is not a structure. Okay. All right, and are there any other locations on the property where there are, the perimeter setback is not honored?
My testimony is there's no place on the property where the perimeter setback is not honored.
Because of your interpretation as to the basin being...
Because of the way the ordinance stipulates the perimeter setback.
Okay, now, with regard to your argument that 50% open space is anything that's green, that, I think that's your position, is it not, on this side?
Well, with, with respect to...
The answer is yes or no, Mr. Flannery.
No, it's not.
It will help me to get, all right, then I'm going to rephrase the question.
Hold on a second, the question was, was it your testimony that open space is anything green? Was that your testimony?
No, it was not.
Okay, move on.
Okay, was it your testimony that anything not covered by an impervious surface is open space?
It was my testimony.
The answer can be yes or no.
No.
Otherwise...
No.
Okay, so it wasn't your testimony, let me... So you're saying that open space on this, you did not testify that open space is area not covered by impervious surface?
I read from Section 18-21E, Area Requirements 3, which says minimum open space, 50% of gross area of planned unit development tract, period. For purposes of this requirement, open space shall mean those portions of the planned unit development tract not covered by buildings, structures of any kind, streets, or other surfaces paved with impervious materials.
Okay.
That's what I testified.
Okay, so, in your calculation of your compliance with... Okay, so, are, in your calculation of your compliance with the provision of the ordinance, it, your testimony that basically a rear yard of a house in this development would be considered open space under that definition?
Per this section of the ordinance, yes.
Or that, that's what I guessed, too. So, what would be the manner in which the, uh, development would restrict the use of rear yards to the customary types of improvements that people use their rear yards for, like porches, decks, pools, play equipment?
Well, if, if we were at 50, 49%, where 50% is allowed, that would be a legitimate concern, when we're at 30%, where 50% is allowed, there's no way that people are going to put in their backyards enough impervious to increase the impervious, uh, by an additional 20% of the whole site, it's unconceived.
And, did you calculate these, uh, impervious cover figures, are they someplace where they give a specific calculation of the impervious coverage? Or built areas not covered by building, structures, or...
Those impervious numbers were calculated by dynamic engineering and included on the, uh, general development plan application that was submitted.
And on what basis are you, what are you, are you just speculating that it wouldn't increase by another 20%?
Uh, I, I have been in this business long enough to know that if all the houses, all the roads, all the driveways may get into 30%, there's no way that the, uh, rear yards are, are going to add another 20%.
Pavers?
Pavers, pools...
Walkways?
Anything they want to put in there, and, uh, it, it's not even close.
Now, I'd like to ask you something about your statement about the, the widening of Route 9, okay, now, uh, is it your, your statement that widening and improvements to Route 9 are in the state budget?
The, uh, Department of Transportation has prepared plans.
I asked you if it was in the budget.
I have no knowledge of that.
Thank you, you have no knowledge that anything is in the budget for Route 9 improvement?
That is correct.
Okay. I have no further questions, it is finished. Okay?
Um, counsel, since you met and exceeded my aspiration goals, we have 25 more minutes, and, so that we don't have to continue to this until October, um, are there any other witnesses that you know, or counsel, would like to cross his hands?
Well, uh, the traffic engineer, uh, I might have some questions of the traffic engineer.
Then let's do that, just... Let's see what...
Mr. Stern?
Yes?
Mr. Westen already cross-examined.
Oh, you are correct, you are correct, you are correct.
However, Mr. Stern, you indicated that you had some further questions of the traffic expert for, uh, the application.
That is true.
And maybe this would be a good time to interject those, and then we can cross-examine based on that.
Did we have any other words, uh, does everyone else cross their hands from the applicant?
Yeah, everyone's cross-examined. Counsel, hotbeded by Mr. Weston.
Okay, counsel, would you be okay with us asking some questions of Justin? Okay.
I know, you're also asking this, Mr. Brian Flannery.
What's that?
I would like to cross-examine Mr. Brian Flannery. Um, I understand, whatever, but...
I think last meeting, no, last meeting, the last meeting, we, we had an informal understanding, in the effort to move things forward, that we would let the designated representatives of the homeowners do the cross-examination, and then we will give more than adequate time to, um, the public to speak and ask anything they want.
I would like to be treated the same as attorney, as MLGL requires to do that.
Of the verdict, counsel. I think the answer is no.
Okay.
Please. So, we have different phases, and as those phases proceed, more traffic. Right? And then, these road improvements come along, next year, two years, three years, 10 years, that mitigates the impact.
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have a sense of, I personally looked at your report, I understood some of it, but didn't understand a lot of it, um, is there a sense of what the impact would be through the end of phase three? When do we need to start making the road improvements, which ones we, do we need to make, and by when do we need to make them? I think I heard counsel say, Mr. Flannery say, that at the beginning of phase four, that the applicant would be amenable to these road improvements, some of these road improvements being mandated, Mr. Flannery, did I hear it correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, what we're trying to get at, an understanding of the specificity of what improvements by when, presumably maybe there would be more before phase five started, so that as the impact is growing, that we make sure that those road improvements are correct. You may not be able to answer it today off the top of your head, but I think the board would like to see that in greater detail, or maybe if you do have the top of your head, please.
So, that's not analysis that we've done at this point, the analysis that we did was a full build-out analysis for the full development of the track, and that's what set forth in my traffic study. Um, I think there's a decoupling of those improvements, because, as Mr. Flannery testified, the improvements associated with the county are coming online pretty much regardless of this project, they're, they're in the works, they're in the final design, same thing with the DOT improvements, they're in final design at this point, so, as we come in with our different phases, there will be a traffic study that's going to analyze that impact of that portion of the project, and the cumulative impact of the project as each phase comes along. Um, and I think at that point, what we can do is identify the necessary improvements that are, um, associated with this project, is it the traffic signal, is it, oh, an additional widening across the street, is it, um, the improvements, is it a part of your construction, and there's sufficient capacity?
But I think counsel has, at least taught me, that when we have a subdivision approval, something more micro, we hear the traffic study, you make the presentation, but we really can't make a decision based on that.
John? Well, could, could I, in, in...
Please.
Interject, um, in the context of the general development plan of who law, where in the event the boards would approve it, it would presumably be for this extended lifetime, that nameable idea behind the GDP, I, I, I think it would be well within the board's power and authority in the GDP context...
Exactly.
To, to do essentially what the witness was described, you know, not saying, right now, you have to have this in phase one, you have to have this in phase two, but that as each phase comes in, for preliminary and final, that there be, with a traffic study showing the impact of that phase, and how that's going to be debated, and as subsequent phases come along, the same thing be done. So, I think you could put that...
As a condition, even though we normally wouldn't have that, right?
Yes, because normally you'd just be coming in for preliminary and final subdivision, I think it's that type, that being one example, but that type of, um, flexibility that might not otherwise be there, that, that's exactly what the GDP process contemplates, and a developer might know he'll be able to build this out over an extended period of time without concern as to zoning changes, because the GDP would provide that for longer than preliminary or final approval, but there could be conditions in that GDP approval, um, that if the developer either accept it, or the developer given like, but didn't appeal from the media way, um, that governs any subsequent development, so phase one, whatever conditions you had in there, would, would, would have to be satisfied. Phase two, I, I do believe that that's the whole idea of, not just specifically the traffic, but those types of things are the very types of things that you can address with GDPs.
I think that specifically we get out in the statute, and that's different than the ordinance, and the ordinance just has general applicability, it's not that there was an applicant, it's the law that applies to everyone, that's what the applicant, you know, appealed from, but it's different, because the GDP statute says, a, a GDP may include a circulation plan showing the general location and types of transportation facilities, including facilities with pedestrian access, within the plan development, and any proposed improvements to the existing transportation system outside the plan development. So, the statute specifically says you can look outside the development and make that part of the plan, and part of the conditions.
Yeah, and, and if I could just pick up on that idea, since the, 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 the ordinance provision that Judge Ford invalidated has already been raised, think of where we are today, we have multiple lawsuits going on. In the event this court were to grant the GDP approval, I think there's an awful good chance there'd be a challenge to that, that goes to the law division judge here in, in OSHA County in Tom's River, then there'd be the opportunity to...
It's going to take a long time.
A long time, now, how did Judge not invalidate that provision? We couldn't even have started the GDP process, we couldn't even have filed an application until after all of those other road improvements were made, so, so, you know, it, it's apples and oranges, it's fully consistent with, 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 with the judge's ruling to, to, as a condition of a GDP, you know, that's what you can do as the GDP, and it, it then becomes, you know, the statute requires that every step of the development be consistent with the approved GDP, so that's, so...
So, is Mr. Snyder suggesting that his client would accept the same type of restriction that we, he moved, he was appointed, his client was appointed, before the court, to strike down the requirement that the planning board and the township committee put on, namely, namely that there be specific improvements made before this project could start?
So, I think the distinction, counsel, is, correct me if I'm wrong, that the ordinance was struck down, said you can't do anything until all of them are made, I think what Mr. Snyder is saying, that to extent that we can build in a structure that as this development progresses, there will be milestones that they may be amenable to.
Exactly.
I want to hear the answer. I want to, I want to hear the answer.
Exactly, and, and we're also talking about things that are specific to this project, not about a whole series of traffic improvements throughout the town.
No.
Yeah.
This project.
Yeah, it, it was a distinction from the ordinance.
And counsel, where's Mr. Nado, there she is, the, the, the reason that, that counsel, John and I had the discussion of, could we, could we legally and ethically float this trial balloon with the applicant and with you, was to try to create a middle position that kept the impact to a minimum, and yet let, if, if the board decides to let this development go forward, that it would do so in the least impactful way possible, so that's why John reached out to you guys and to them, to see if that would be something that we'd be listening for.
And my understanding of the email that I received today was that Mr. Snyder rejected that, rejected it, and...
That was my rejection.
If he's saying something different now, I think you ought to say it in plain language, and I also would point out to the board, that this is the same law firm and the same client that challenged the initial, and successfully challenged, the initial requirement that there be infrastructure in place before this began.
I, I agree.
So, anything else that we may put on, he could agree to, and then challenge anyway.
This is hypothetical.
Yeah, we're all hypothetical, and we're trying to muddle through as best we can, Mr. Nado, I think, the government...
I'm, I'm just suggesting that based on the, the past, um, behavior of this client, anything that he doesn't like, even if he appears to acquiesce to it, he can challenge it in court.
And I think he would have a very unhappy planning board if he did that and came back to us.
He should already have a very unhappy planning board, based on his last judgment.
I've been practicing a long, long time, and Mr. Westen's been practicing even longer, and, and, and he knows that an applicant can't agree to something before a board and then challenge that, and that's particularly true in the GDP process, which is really intended to provide for a back and forth, even more so than the typical process, I mean, the notion that I could, you know, that we have, could produce a transcript of what I'm saying here tonight, and then I could go into court and challenge it, I'd be, I'd be left out of court by the judge.
It's an apples and oranges thing between, it's something that the applicant imposes as part of their plan, the board imposes, it's authorized by statute versus the ordinance of general application that's, you know, that's challenged, so...
I would think so.
And, and, again, the comments that get the applause from the crowd, board should not be happy, or should have no...
We have no notions.
Don't deal in this whatsoever, uh, as far as whether the applicant was successful in challenging, exercised the rights, they were successful, that's the law of the case, that's what we abide by, and it's, we, and they have every right to proceed in their direction.
Mr. Nado, please?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Stern, uh, the, the law actually is not what Mr. Snyder represented with respect to an applicant who comes before a board, gets a condition imposed, consents to a condition, and then later can go on and challenge it, and there are several cases, and I would be more than pleased to provide them for you, there are appellate divisions, written decisions, in which the, the court has allowed such challenges to take place, so that's why we are so critical that this...
Are you, are you talking about off-site payments or parks?
No, not just off-site, there's, there's a bunch of other cases, so there are cases, now, I, 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 I do acknowledge that Mr. Jackson's ruling the last time, and his statement this evening, essentially is that because this is a GDP, your purview is broader than it would be in an as-of-right application.
And you would agree with that?
I, I agree 100% of that, and the statute specifies that, and the ordinance incorporates that, but it becomes even more critical because of the big, you, it, it, this is not a meaningless step, it is a step that vests this applicant with dancing, and it vests them with intensity, and so, I, that's why we are asking for extreme caution with respect to all of the decisions that you make, and I very much appreciate the fact that that is how you're approaching this, and I hope that we continue to do so.
So, let me ask hypothetically, let's assume that whatever this, all the people in this room would agree to, is agreed to, as Mr. Jackson has said, and that it was unassailable for argument's sake, the concept of the phase that Mr. Snyder's been talking about is, on behalf of your clients, is that something that, without getting to the details, your client would be amenable to?
Mr. Stern, I would have to say that, first, I would have to have this addressed by the entire board of the association, and secondly, it would be one very minor component, and there is litigation ongoing.
We're not asking you to waive your litigation or settle this, I'm saying that if your litigation were to... were to fail, that this board, if we were to have a phased-in, milestone-based approach to each of these five phases, to link it to some objective standard of road improvements, would that be, go back, if you think your board would be amenable to that, then we might choose to explore that option.
I would certainly be more than willing to go back to the board and address it, but it cannot be done in a piecemeal manner, there are many impacts, there are fiscal impacts that we think are not adequately addressed, and if were done, if we, like, did a narrow focus, assuming that we lost the litigation on the open space issue, then these would be the conditions, I would, you know, I think we would listen to that, and certainly we would have to look at the whole picture, not just address it little, one piece at a time, I think it really needs to be done comprehensively. Certainly, we would be willing to try to work with the proviso, that whatever this board did on this application would be subject to reversal by the Superior Court of New Jersey in the litigation that we are presenting about.
Of course.
We're not actually waiving anything.
That's, I would think that that would not be an unfair perspective, and I certainly would, I'm getting nods from one of the board members here, so I would be glad to present it.
Okay, so it's ten to ten, and my esteemed colleague here will start kicking me under the table vigorously if we go past ten.
Pick your heart.
Pick your heart. So would there, at the end of the day, we can't, we, the board, cannot create whatever these milestones might be, the details. And I'm sure Mr. Nado has her traffic engineer we haven't heard from yet, would want to opine, and then we'd have Terry, you know, but if in theory we could have a meeting of the milestones, those milestones might look like, then that would be useful to the board. If I'm out of line, tell them, just, you know.
Here's your super line from my perspective, and we'll try to come up with proposed language that, you know, see how everyone likes that. It's not what we can for tonight.
Okay, so we're real hard, come up with some good good, okay? Okay. Any other comments? Take a motion, Ben Melton.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, somebody.
We have a minute, Ms. Allen. You have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
I believe having an official announcement about carrying it, Mr. Jackson?
No.
The members of the public advised that the application tonight, this matter, the Park at Lakewood LLC, their application for approval of general development plan will be continued on June 5th, 2019, six o'clock. June 5th, June 5th, Wednesday night, six o'clock at this meeting hall, there will be no parking notices, and their record will reflect the applicant has waited twenty-four minutes to exit at eight. I request that you send me a letter.
Correct.
What's on the outside of your house?
What?
What's on the outside of your house, vinyl siding?
Yeah.
This works great for eggs.
What?
This works great for taking the eggs raw.
Oh, that's what it is?
Yes, Home Depot has it.
Spray nine.
Yeah, I've been in the business forty-five years.
Thank you, thank you.
And it's just spray it and wipe it down.
Thank you. Could I, could I say it in the video what had just happened? This gentleman came over, he was concerned because some individuals before this meeting sprayed eggs on, threw raw eggs on my house, he asked me that if I have vinyl siding, and I told him yes, so he advised me to buy the spray nine in Home Depot, and that will easily take off the garbage that somebody did.
The coach with the spray for his buddy.
Thank you. Hello?
Good pass on, good healthy one.
I haven't seen you lately.
I'm eighty-two years old.
Come back, come back, we need you.
Forty-seven years of work, I treated myself, went to Florida for four months.
Come back, come back.
I mean, I gotta, I need your stimulation. Good year, good healthy one.
I think we realize that legally there is a time when it comes to the traffic situation.
He's the best sergeant over here, the best.
Come and speak to me? Just give me a second, I'm gonna get to my car.
No, come, come, come.
I just don't shut off the camera until I get to my car, safety reasons.